I'm shocked that there's not more people here.
I know, yeah, I'm surprised.
Disappointed also. You ready to go? Good afternoon, everyone. On Tuesday, May 20th at 3:30, I call this special joint meeting of the City Council and the Planning Commission to order. City Clerk, could you please call roll and tell us about our public comment policy?
Absolutely. Mayor Byrne?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Delves?
Here.
Councilmember Booter?
Here.
Councilmember Drama?
Here.
Commissioner Alborn?
Here.
Commissioner LaPage?
Here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
And Commissioners Allen and Kaya Pekoff are absent.
Yeah, for the record, I'm also here.
Mr. Byrne is here.
My list is so long.
Let's hope the whole meeting doesn't go like this.
Sincerely apologize. Alright, so during special city council meetings, public comments are permitted only for items listed on the agenda. After each item on the agenda is introduced, the mayor will invite public comment on that item. Each speaker has three minutes to speak unless otherwise adjusted by the mayor. While stating your name is optional, it helps to identify speakers in the meeting minutes. Remote or in-person participants will be taken following comments from those in attendance, and those who do not comply with the requirements of the Brown Act will be muted.
Thank you. And thank you for your attendance today for this important meeting. The first and only order of business today will be to review and discuss the draft housing element amendment, revise Chapter 2, new Appendix C, and provide direction on the draft revisions. This is an exciting opportunity for a joint conversation between the council, planning commission, and residents and business owners to ensure alignment and provide direction to staff on the proposed revisions. I would like to sincerely thank the many volunteers, staff members, and commission members who through their extraordinary efforts made this meeting possible. Since I was going to be out of town today, we had arranged for Mayor Pro Tem Delves to manage this discussion. Well, turns out I'm here, but because Bob is well-versed on this subject, given his strong participation on the planning commission during the approval of the original housing element, he will conduct this, our only order of business today. Bob?
Okay. I think we're prepared to just start with staff presentation.
We'll give it a second for IT to put it up on our big screen here. Thank you very much downstairs. Alright, good afternoon, I suppose. Council and planning commission, it's nice to see you all together. Hopefully you're not too cramped up there. So I want to say at the onset, please bear with us, this is a long presentation, hold on to your hats, it's almost an hour, but I promise you it's worth it because we have a lot to go through. So tonight, what we're going to be talking to you about is reviewing your review of the draft housing element, Chapters 2 and Appendix C, how we got here, what happens next, the five strategies we used, other revisions, and then we'll have time for Q&amp;A and feedback. So, starting right at the beginning, how did we get here? So as you know, the state of California had a large, you know, I like to talk in food analogies, a large pie. Their pie was 2.5 million new homes that are needed for the state. Our share of that pie regionally, our slice, became 33,000-ish units, and then our local slice, a much smaller slice of that pie, became 349 units that we had to plan for over the next eight years. That means you have to identify potential sites where housing could, would be built, and some of those need to be affordable. So in April of 2024, the city council adopted our six-cycle housing element, and it was subsequently certified by the state Housing Community Development Department, or HCD. One of the key things that it did, and one of the reasons we moved rather quickly through it, was to protect the village from what's known as builder's remedy, whereby if you don't have a housing element adopted and certified by the state, you can be subject to buildings built far outside of your development standards, multiple stories, things like that. So, how did we get there so quickly? 65% of the affordable units that are in our housing element were planned, or are currently planned to be developed on two city-owned sites, that's about 149 units. When the housing element was adopted and leading up to that, there was a resident-led effort brought forward to have a conversation about finding better place, more appropriate places to spread those housing units out so the housing could actually come true and be built. That group was called the Affordable Housing Alternative Group, or the AHA Group. City Council directed staff to work with the AHA Group, and we all got creative. It was an excellent effort. We've spent almost a year together working on this, getting creative to find a way to revise the housing element to disperse that affordable housing better throughout the village. We did that by focusing on specific programs, hotels, downtown, ADUs, and churches, which we're going to talk about this evening, you've heard about already. And each of these programs, the creative solutions that are in them, contribute to the overall, the number, that number that we had to find to be able to better disperse the units throughout the city. Each of those contribute to that, and it diversifies the housing throughout the village, rather than putting all of our eggs in one or two baskets. You'll see throughout the evening, what we've done is we've taken a conservative, conservative approach toward those numbers. We started with essentially what the universe was of potential, and then cut that a little bit so that we were, we were dealing with real potential, and then cut that again to be conservative. And that's, that's an important thing you're going to hear about later, because that's, that's really what the state's looking for. They want realism, they want viability, and they don't want you to rely on only one site. So, where, where have we, what have we been up to the last year or so? We have met as a, as a combined group between AHA and the city for the last 10 months with specific subcommittees focused on those topic areas that I talked about earlier. We've been researching best practices, looking at data, collecting data, having workshops, meeting with developers, and a host of other things. We also retained a professional consultant, Veronica Tam, who's an expert in housing element. Both Marnie and I have worked with her in previous jurisdictions, and we're, continue to be very impressed with her. She's done a lot of housing element amendments like ours recently. Our, we also have been having regular meetings with HCD. Our counterpart at that organization is named Paul, he's the, effectively the manager of the reviewers. We've had a regular meeting with him, a standing meeting every other Tuesday. As we've been working through this over the last 10 months, developing these programs, when they came to a point that they were pretty well fleshed out, we started to run each one by him individually and get, not approval, because they can't approve anything, approve anything at this point because it's not a formal submission, but just, you know, a temperature check to make sure we're heading the right direction. And through those meetings, we coined this phrase, turning constraints into opportunities, which is the unique thing about these programs you're going to see tonight, is that we're taking things that are unique about Carmel by the Sea and leveraging them into a way to create housing opportunities throughout the village that will actually get built. So, what happens next? We're having this meeting tonight, it's May 20th, we're having a joint meeting of the council and planning commission, and you're, you're going to be taking a review tonight and giving us feedback on Chapter 2 and Appendix C, we're going to answer some questions, and we're going to take that feedback, and we're going to polish the drafts that are, we have right now, and then we're going to send it to the state, Paul, and his team, for what we're calling, and they've agreed to, as a friendly review. So there's a formal process for submitting a housing element amendment, but because it has been such a collaborative approach with HCD, they've agreed to do this friendly review with us, once we get your feedback this evening, and incorporate those changes into it. We're targeting submitting that to them on May 30th, and they, they said they need about two or three weeks, so we're estimating the worst-case scenario of three weeks. One important note here is housing elements are planning documents, and that's where we're at in this process right now. We are planning for housing to be built. We will get to the implementation stage, which is where you start writing the code sections that actually implement it, that get into really, really detailed specifics. Things like, you know, how much actual water per program is going to be, not just we will, we want to give water for affordable housing, actual mixes of affordability, full extent of incentives, things like that are fleshed out in the, in the implementation phase, and all of that will come back to you, both, both, both entities, both planning commission and the city council, later. First thing you do is you adopt your planning document, which is the housing element. In this case, we're amending it. So first thing we'll do is amend the housing element, and then we'll come back through with the implementation stuff. So some of the things we're going to talk about tonight will not have every detail listed, nor will we fully have every detail for you, because some of those things get worked out in public hearings through the implementation process. That's just something important to keep in mind. So with that, we're going to talk about affordability, start to kind of set the picture here, and Anna's going to come up and talk about that. I think you'll find that the, the numbers are a little surprising, and so we feel like it's worth talking about, so you understand what the term affordability means in our context here in Monterey County.
Thank you, Brandon. Good afternoon. Anna Jeanette with Committee Housing and Community Planning and Building. Can you hear me all right? It feels like I'm very far away. Good? Okay. So, what is considered affordable? State HCD released the 2025 state income limits earlier this year. The median income level in Monterey County was identified, and from their qualifying income levels, including very low, low, and moderate were calculated. This slide represents the annual income limits for the Monterey County area. The columns on the table represent the specific qualifying household income levels, and the rows distribute the income levels based on the number of households, or the size of the household. So for example, a household with four people, if they were to make $125,400 or less, they would qualify as a moderate, moderate income level. As opposed to a household of one, if that person made $50,600 or less, they would qualify as low income. So these numbers are important because they allow, again, qualifying households to rent affordable housing projects. So this slide, this represents the monthly rental income limits for Monterey County for those specific qualifying incomes. This, we wanted to present this information because not only does it show that a property owner could charge these amounts of rents within the area, it also shows that folks who would like to rent affordable units, if they qualify, this is what the rent looks like. So, once, now that we have provided some background information, we will go into the five strategies. And I just want to stress on the point that Brandon brought up. These programs are at a policy level, so while you're considering whether this will work, or whether you wanted to make comments or changes, just note that the implementation phase will happen later, and perhaps at that time, those comments can be implemented. So with that, I would like to welcome Tim up to the podium. He will cover hotel residential, and then we'll go on to the other four. Thank you.
Thanks, Anna. I was supposed to say Mark. Okay, thanks.
Good afternoon, City Council and Planning Commission. How are you? Tim Toomey here. So I'm going to talk about our hotel program. And, somebody changed it for the better, actually. So this is a, I'm going to walk through the conversion of underperforming hotels to mixed-income housing. This is actually a program that is in the current housing element, but it has a restriction, it has a minimum, the only qualifying hotels are hotels that sit on a half-acre lot size or more, and there's only five hotels in town that fit that qualification, and actually, three of them are going through reconstruction. So it's not much of an opportunity in the current setup. So what we did was we put our heads together and reinvented this to expand the sale and transfer of the room rights, which we're calling the hotel keys, to affect this program. And by doing this, we opened it up to all of the hotels in town, so there's no minimum hotel site size requirement in the new program. And I just want to take a second here to talk about, you know, what is a hotel key? I'm sure everybody knows, but just maybe for the audience, and the thousands of people that are zooming in, the hotel keys are the hotel room rights to operate the hotel. It's kind of like a software license, in a way. And our vision with this program is to lease, release the keys to be sold and transferred, and it's basically to allow them to be moved around. And we don't have a policy to do that now, but that's what we're hoping we can accomplish. So this is a look at how we would envision it working on a real basic level. A hotel property owner would sell their hotel property, their building, and then transfer the keys, the hotel rights, to an affordable housing developer. That individual would convert the hotel building into affordable residential housing, and at that point, they lose the keys. The, the keys are decoupled and hopefully to be sold and transferred, because it's no longer a hotel. It's a, it's now an apartment building. And then that individual could either manage that affordable housing building, unit, or sell the property. And then the sale of the keys goes to a hotel developer, who takes those keys and uses them to build a new hotel, or sells the keys to other hotels to add to their property. This slide is an attempt to show how it pencils out, and Mark Watson worked with me on this project, and he manages about three or four hotels in town, so he's very familiar with this idea and with the hotel industry. So he put together a detailed pro forma, and it's, it's going to be in the Appendix C in the next round, but I took a summary of it, just clipped a summary out. And what this shows is that, and I've rounded the numbers up for just kind of ease of use. They're, they're, they don't come out that evenly on the pro forma. So this is looking at, the purchase price of the hotel would be $5.9 million. The conversion, oh, I'm sorry, is taking a 19-room hotel, converting it at an 85% ratio to 15, to a 15-room apartment, because there's work that needs to be done in the current hotel that's being converted, maybe a kitchen needs to be added. So we're not going to get the same amount of rooms out of the hotel as it sits today when we convert it to the affordable apartment. So the purchase price of the hotel is 5.9 million. There's this conversion cost that I'm talking about, and we've got some estimates from some architects that that could be around $100,000 per unit. So 16 rooms times that amount is 1.6 million. So the total developer investment at this point, $7.5 million. So then, then they would sell the converted hotel, which is now an apartment, and that would go for 5.1 million. But at this point, as you can see, there's the loss of about 2.4 million. So this is where the hotel keys really play an important, important part. And the sale of the hotel keys then at, we're averaging conservatively, $300,000 a key, would bring in 5.7 million, and then there's a profit of 3.3 million, which is a 44% return on investment. And that compares to the industry average in hotels of ROIs ranging from 6% to 12% per year, so it's pretty much off the charts for that. Okay, thank you. So then the incentives, we're looking to get a policy in place so that we can sell and transfer the room rights, the hotel keys, to other properties in the commercial district, and also looking for far flexibility on the hotel sites that are being converted to mixed-income housing, and then allocation of water credits, expedited permitting processing, and waived or reduced permitting fees. The benefits that we see is, is that this is an innovative approach, and when we ran it through HCD, and we were the lucky ones to be first on the docket to talk to HCD, so you can imagine how nerve-wracking that was. But in any event, they really liked it, and they thought it was really a creative program. Yeah, that is a good way to get some housing built, and it unlocks the value of the hotel keys to incentivize the conversion, optimizes resources, it repurposes existing underperforming hotels, it upgrades the hotel stock, which will increase the city's TOT revenue. And it aligns with the village character, focuses on the conversion of small scattered hotel site, hotel properties, integrating affordable housing into the fabric of the village. And then there's a superpower that we have where Carmel has a hotel room cap of 948 rooms, and we're at that cap, maybe a little bit above it. That just leverages the value of these, further leverages the value of these keys. It's privately funded, so that helps make it more economically viable. Then, this is how we arrived at the projected housing units. There was an analysis that was done by the city to identify what hotels fall into the lower performing groups, and there's 379 rooms associated with that. There's two groups, out of five groups, the bottom two. And then the hotel, the conversion rate of 85% that I talked about earlier, that would drop it down to 322. And then what Brandon was talking about was HCD's emphasis on, you know, reliance and realistic expectations. So based on those conversations, we dropped the 32, 32 by a half, down to 161, feeling that that's, that's more realistic and achievable. And then the income mix is split 25% among all the four categories, so it would give us 120 affordable units and 41 market rate units. So that's my presentation, and now I'm happy to turn it over to Councilmember Hans Booter.
Thanks, Tim. I'm going to talk about the mixed-income incentive program, which focuses on the downtown. And so our goal with that, you know, we have a couple of programs here that are tailored to specific kinds of properties. So the hotel-to-residential conversion program that Tim just mentioned, obviously tailored to hotels. The live-work program is tailored to particular kinds of properties that have these units that could be potential live-work units. And so what we wanted to do was to create a program that has kind of broader potential applicability, and something that, you know, sort of any property owner downtown could potentially opt into if they were interested in creating housing. You know, a secondary goal was to incentivize the creation of mixed-income housing, and sort of a term of art, but when I say mixed-income housing, I just mean, you know, housing that caters to a range of income levels, like as Anna was just describing. And there's a couple of benefits to that. One is sociologically, it better integrates folks into the community. And second, you know, adding, including market rate units in an income mix creates an economic incentive for the property owner to maintain their building. So there's a number of reasons why, you know, mixed income is generally a best practice in the space. You know, physically, when we started to think about buildings in the downtown, we looked at a property called Trevek Court, which became a bit of an inspiration for us. So Trevek Court, as some of you may know, was developed within the past 15 years by the Carmel Foundation. It's, you know, immediately to the north of the post office parking lot. It happens to be 100% affordable senior development, it's got 14 units. It's pretty dense, it's like 76 dwelling units per acre. But it really feels like a very Carmel building. You know, it's got an interior courtyard, you know, it's at a human scale. And so we sort of took that and, and put a couple of the architects, you know, in the AHA group that, that, that we've been working with, and said, hey, can you do some space planning exercises to help us understand, you know, what kind of density we should be looking at for this program? And, you know, in particular, one of the features of downtown Carmel is there's really always some ground floor commercial. And so we said, okay, well, Trevek Court, but it should have some ground floor commercial, maintain that, you know, interior courtyard-type feature. And so if you, if you layer all that in, what kind of density feels, feels right? And so they kept coming back, you know, plus or minus, you know, 88 dwelling units per acre. And so this program, you know, we've targeted an income mix tentatively around 30% affordable, 70% market rate. So you might ask, like, well, why, why so heavy on the market rate? It's because we're trying to create a program that pencils without any public subsidy. Like, so without any tax credits, somebody could just go right now downtown and say, alright, I'm going to opt into this program, and with the city incentives that are provided, it's going to make economic sense for me to, to do this deal. And so currently, the density that's allowed for 100% affordable project is 88 dwelling units per acre. If you go mixed income and you have, you know, one market rate unit, all of a sudden, the max is only 33 dwelling units per acre. And so what we wanted to do was kind of level the playing field. And so it really aligned with what we were seeing from the space planning exercises. We can go up to 88 without really, you know, we're not changing the, the character of the town, it's a very Carmel-type building. And so, you know, that is, that's one of the key incentives here, is, is offering, provided that a property owner creates units at this income mix, they would have the opportunity to go up to 88 dwelling units per acre. Now, it's not an FAR bonus, or a floor-area ratio bonus. An FAR, you know, FAR is sort of how big is the box. Density is how many units you put in the box, right? So we're not changing the size of the box, we're just changing the number of units inside of it. And so other incentives would be water. I'd say this is the other main incentive. You know, we're proposing to not only provide the water for the affordable units, but also the water for the market rate units that make the deal pencil. And so those are the two main incentives. Also expedited processing and waived or reduced permitting fees, like in, in many of our presentations. The benefits of this program are that it incentivizes the creation of mixed-income housing at the property level, and it distributes housing for various income groups throughout the village. It is economically viable with no public funding required, which really raises the prospects of, of actually getting some housing built. And this is going to be an implementation question, but this particular program, unlike something like the live-work program, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, creates a real opportunity for us to, if we choose, to incentivize the creation of larger bedroom count units that could, you know, accommodate families with kids. And so, you know, in terms of projections, we were pretty conservative on this one. We really just picked, at least for arena credit, to credit with the state, three particular sites where there's expressed property owner interest. And so that comes out to 27 units, nine affordable, 18 market rate. We think that we could actually do better than that in real life, but that's what we're claiming, or proposing to claim here. And then I wanted to talk about another program that's related to the downtown. This is our live-work program. And I guess I wanted to sort of take a step back first and just talk about the process through which this idea came about. You know, we, the folks on the AHA group spent many, many hours, you know, doing something that I think is probably unprecedented in the state of California. We, we literally put boots on the ground. On this one initiative, we had 17 volunteers, including one of our planning commissioners, and we, we went out and we created an iPhone app, and we, we literally catalogued every single downtown property. You know, Mel had a, she had a, she had a, a broken collarbone, and she was out there doing it. So I mean, we really left it all in the field. But, you know, 200-plus properties, 1,000-plus leasable spaces, and really collected really granular information. And I think that, that one of the key things here is, you know, we didn't take sort of a cookie-cutter approach. a cookie cutter approach and graft it onto Carmel. We started with what is Carmel? And then we came up with what's the solution that, that rises out of that? And one of the things that we found when we were out there walking through the downtown is that there's really two downtown Carmels, right? There's the downtown Carmel that we're all familiar with, that, you know, it's the main thoroughfares, it's, um, you know, Ocean Avenue, it's these commercial spaces that have high occupancy rates, high rents, you know, often north of $7 a square foot. But there's this other downtown Carmel, um, and it's, you know, around the corner, on a side street, it's upper story or off-street commercial space. Those spaces tend to be smaller. They tend to be sort of, kind of impaired commercial space. And one of the things that we found from the data was a very high percentage of those spaces are either vacant or what we characterize as underutilized. So you'd be walking and you'd see these spaces in a courtyard, et cetera, down an alley that are used as storage or they're vacant, there's a for rent sign. Um, you know, oftentimes you've seen a by appointment only sign, or my favorite was the by appointment or by chance signs. Um, and, you know, the, the reality is that those spaces, when we talk to commercial brokers, they rent for a surprisingly low rent, like a dollar 50 to $2 a square foot triple net. And I think the key insight was that rent, believe it or not, is so low that a property owner could make more money if they rented that space as a deed restricted affordable live workspace than as a purely commercial space. Now, what do I mean by a live workspace? A live workspace is basically a space that has a commercial storefront, could be small. Um, and then within the same exact unit behind a wall or a partition is a residential space where somebody lives, right? And so we don't have that in Carmel now. And the proposal here is to create a new live work use category for the downtown, um, where we would have that commercial storefront in the front, the residential space in the rear. This would be for off-street or upper story, um, spaces. And a property owner would be able to convert that space into a live workspace, provided that they deed restrict it at an affordable rental level. Um, and so, you know, again, the rent is low enough that this makes economic sense for the property owner. And it's important to recognize that the cap rates in Carmel are so low that any incremental dollar in net operating income yields an increase in the property value of 25 to 30x. And so the number one incentive is, you know, higher rent equals, um, higher property value for the property owner. We're also offering, um, or proposing to offer, uh, water, um, for these units and then expedited processing and the, the waived or reduced permitting fees. And, you know, the benefits of this, we really found it to be a win-win for the community, the property owner and the prospective tenants. Um, you know, first of all, we're not adding net new square footage. We're, we're converting existing square footage. So from that standpoint, really not changing, you know, sort of the physical fabric. We're providing housing opportunities for, um, you know, Carmel, it's history, right? It's grounded in being sort of a haven for artists and creatives. And this is a real opportunity to create housing opportunities for those types of folks, artists, creatives, shopkeepers, right? The 27-year-old ceramicist that has a display and then they live in the back, right? So we thought that that was really, really interesting. An opportunity to encourage more locally serving businesses and then also the ability to activate some of these, um, really interesting off-street spaces in Carmel that right now aren't as activated or as interesting as, as they could be. And so on this one, um, we in total identified 259 commercial spaces that fit these criteria as potential live work spaces, um, distributed among a number of properties. But we identified 20 properties in particular that had a high enough concentration of these potential live work spaces that we considered them quote unquote, "live work sites." Of those 20, we picked 14, um, for inclusion in this proposed amendment. Um, there's 116 potential live work units in those 14 sites. And that yielded, um, 85 units, um, uh, when all said and done, uh, for inclusion, um, in the amendment. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Nancy Toomey, who's on Zoom.
Yes. Hello, folks. Hopefully you can hear me. If you're not, you, you'll holler. Um, okay, I'm here to, uh, update you on the work under the accessory dwelling unit side of the house. Uh, and the focus of what we're, we're, uh, proposing is to up-level some of the work that was originally crafted in the housing element to, uh, further the unit count, uh, for this topic area. In the original housing element, we only were credited for 30 units, uh, for, toward our arena. But with this work and some revisions of some prior updates to our housing element in, in the prior cycle, uh, we're achieving a, a significant uplift. So let's dr- drill into these details. So as you know, of course, the city is, is still hard at work, the planning department at, uh, providing an update to our local ADU ordinance in alignment with our LCP. Um, so that work is still underway and will continue to, to move forward over the course, course of the rest of this year. We're also proposing the implementation of an amnesty program. And this is basically a scenario where, uh, folks who may have had a unpermitted cottage or studio on site, that those are brought under the umbrella of an ADU program in alignment with health and safety regulations. And, um, as just as a point of reference, uh, in Q3, in scanning the, uh, real estate postings, uh, there were three units, uh, discovered, uh, in that, uh, window of time that were, uh, unpermitted units. So they're out there. Plus 20 units, uh, inside this particular cycle of ADUs, uh, delivered or underway are actually conversions that kind of fit as a adjunct to this. But state law has really, uh, up-leveled the focus on these as a candidate for bringing new housing, uh, to communities like ours and throughout the state. Uh, we're also, uh, exploring a pre-sales inspection program, which can help us uncover additional, uh, studios or cottages that again, may not have been built under a, a standard permitting process, but also encouraging folks that may have those units, uh, whether they qualify as ADUs today and/or need some tweaks to adjust to it, uh, can then be a part of this inventory that brings new housing to our community. And since, seeing as most of these tend to be smaller units, they, uh, inherently, uh, tend to be a lower cost rent, uh, but that is of course up to the discretion of the property owner. We'll also implement, uh, another required program according to state law, which is the, uh, ADU plans and, uh, continue to monitor the legislation, which continues to try to strive for expedited processing of any and all ADUs, um, for the communities throughout the state. So the, um, some of the details here, um, and emphasizing the fact that, uh, we have already been seeing inside this cycle, uh, 45 ADU permits or certificates of occupancy, easy for me to say, um, in this window. So we're already making significant progress, but it's, uh, important for those folks who may have, uh, an ADU or are planning in that direction, don't know, uh, how it's, uh, how they can enable finding renters for their property. And we're proposing a, uh, relationship with the Carmel Foundation, who is a trusted local, uh, establishment, of course, as you all know. And they have a, a waitlist for, uh, open properties that might fit that, uh, particular renter profile. So we've got, uh, a, a matching proposal here that will continue to, uh, take more firm shape in the coming months. And this actually benefit does apply to any and all of the affordable units that will come about throughout, uh, all of these strategies that you're hearing about this evening. And, uh, we're also of course looking forward to maximizing local workers, whether they're city staff or local teachers or, or the like. Uh, we sure look to welcome them to those, uh, properties, uh, through, that are dispersed throughout our village. Uh, we will also, uh, continue to elevate the, and the ease of moving forward with ADU plans. Uh, we've jointly crafted a property owner's guide, uh, all in one document to tell you what you can do, how you can do it, what state laws are applicable, what steps are involved, et cetera. That has been updated and will continue to be updated as state laws and/or our local ordinance, uh, comes to bear here. So that, uh, again, it will be kept alive as we move forward. We'll reach out to property owners and uplift the content on our website to again, simplify and streamline the efforts that might be a part of, uh, considering an ADU on your property in town. Next. And, uh, as mentioned upfront, we were originally started off with, uh, 30 units in our housing element. We've adjusted our, uh, our numbers from prior, uh, year report outs, uh, to then, uh, throughout all of this work, including the 45 units that have already been, uh, permitted and/or licensed for occupancy, we're proposing, uh, the achievement of 77 units in this version of our, uh, housing element or the amendment as, as we, we've been discussing. And, um, again, we're looking to maximize local, uh, local residents, uh, occupying these, uh, these new ADU units and, um, extending the, the reach and the fulfillment of full-time housing for seniors and, um, and again, enabling that alignment to available ADU properties via the renter match, as mentioned. And, um, through the, um, the work with, uh, both the, um, uh, let's see, what, what it was here? Through the work that is being done with the amnesty program and pre-sales, uh, to make sure that, um, the safety and, um, and the like are, are fulfilled with those units that, uh, are candidates to be moved into an ADU classification as we move forward. With the momentum that we've already seen, um, we're, uh, not yet resolved on what is best with regard to incentives, uh, since we've got this 45 as work in progress, uh, but we will continue to focus any of our recommendations to you in the follow-up, uh, cycles with regard to maximizing the low and affordable rent rates, uh, as we, um, come to the next level of details on implementation for your approval. So you can see below here that we're looking for the 30, 30, 10, uh, classification in the protected house, housing units that are tied to ADUs for this cycle. And with that, I'll wrap and, uh, shift over to Victoria, who will talk to you about the churches.
It's nice to see you. It's been, I haven't been here for a while, so I'm very happy to be back and see all of you. So it falls on me to, to talk to you about the religious facilities. You know, this is, you're not going to hear anything unusual here. Um, in fact, the religious facility program is primarily driven by state law. Uh, you, we had a religious facility program in the original housing element. It was also dictated by state law in part, um, but much like the other programs you've heard tonight, we just didn't have the time to do all the boots-on-the-ground research that gives the sort of more granular information about how we're doing on it and how much can be included in the church program. And once we did that, and you may have heard, um, this mentioned before, but we held a summit over at, um, Sunset Center in November of last year. All five churches, we have five in the city boundaries, all of them came, um, multiple representatives from the churches. We also had experts from in the legal arena. We had experts in project development. We had religious leader, a religious leader come and sort of in the inspirational side of things. Um, and from our understanding, either the, the leadership of each church and/or the community of each church is maintaining strong interest in pursuing this. Out of that, we had had one church in the original housing element. It was, um, Christ Scientist. Um, but now out of all that outreach, um, we were able to see that actually two more churches are moving pretty quickly ahead. Um, and those are now able to be included as other sites. So now we have three of the five as actual sites while we continue to do outreach for all five. Some of the other outreach we did, I just want you to understand, is, um, the staff put together a, what would normally be a costly for the churches, um, pre-designed site analysis, a legal analysis that tells them how the state law applies to churches in general, and then how specifically their site, uh, with its size and boundaries and its zoning, uh, how the laws affect them in particular. So now they have a, a resource that they can hand off to an architect, which by the way, they already have in some cases, to start doing the sketches and figure out the programming, what exactly they want to pursue. And there are many options for churches to pursue. Another thing that's changed is that, from the housing element, is that, um, before we were operating under SB 9, which has a lower density, um, per, for the acre. And since then, we've moved to SB 4, which is a more recent law. It allows up to 20 dwelling, dwelling units to the acre. Um, these are by right and this is without rezoning. Again, this is from the state perspective. This, we're not doing anything to make that happen. So in a way, you guys don't have as much work to do on this part. It's kind of done automatically at the state level in terms of policy. The other thing we're doing locally, this is, uh, I don't know if it's any different, but we're making, it's, it's different from a typical approach, is that you can opt as a locality to, um, have that, uh, capacity calculation rely just on areas of a site that don't already have buildings on them. So like you have a church and maybe there's a parking lot and you just say, okay, we're only going to let the church calc their capacity for participation based on what's left over and doesn't have a building on it. We don't, we're not proposing that here. We are saying, your site is your site. You decide how you're going to get those units on there, uh, within, you know, the, the boundaries of the law. And we'll calc the max based on the entire site. And, um, the other change that's, that's a little different, I mentioned how we did the outreach. I mentioned that we had these legal analyses. We've already done an architect matching service a bit. We have put the, um, churches in touch with the experts that, uh, have volunteered pro bono to advise them. We have given them video and reading and other, uh, resources for educational purposes. And, um, that constitutes already a little bit more of a robust service, um, than was originally pursued and proposed. We also think that the, again, having done this ground, on-the-ground research, that, and you've already, I'm the last person to present here, so you've already seen that every program that we've presented so far is self-financing. Every program, and this is very unusual, I think, is worth emphasizing. Normally, when a community puts a housing element together, they are heavily reliant on public funds, public competitions. As you can imagine, Carmel is never really a great candidate for asking for money from people. But, um, this way, we've released ourselves from that dependency. But the churches are a little bit, of all the groups, they're going to have the hardest time. They're going to be reliant on fundraising, et cetera. So, um, uh, you, you know already that the original housing element had a trust fund in it, um, scheduled for later in the housing cycle. We'd like to bring that forward. And my, my guess, our guess, is that much of what we design and propose when we implement will be to direct some of that money to the most needy in terms of getting housing going, which as far as we can tell so far is probably the churches. So that's that one. Uh, this just breaks down the incentives that again, are primarily coming from the state, that are the powerful ones, because the state really believes in, in, in developing housing on church sites, on religious sites. Exemptions from environmental review, automatic, there's nothing we can do about that. Reduction in parking requirements, increased density, that's by right, and by right, design a- approvals. These are all coming from the state. From the city side, you're going to see things that are very similar to what you've seen for the other programs. We would ask for priority water allocation expedited and processing, reduce fees. In this case, a little bit extra support, just on the ground, in terms of technical assistance, maybe with grants, trust fund support, as I mentioned. And then, as ADUs said, you know, partnership facilitation for finding tenants and even management of the facility. The benefits are perhaps obvious. The reason the state is so enthusiastic about religious facilities is that it just encourages and builds on the natural synergy between the mission of a religious place that has a supportive community already, and it matches that with folks who are most in need of support. In this, in our case, for Carmel, this emphasizing the churches also leverages the properties that happen to be some of the largest in the village. We have over 15 acres of church sites. That's 2.5% of our entire acreage of the city, it's pretty astounding. We also think a benefit here is that this was a pent-up demand. The churches actually wanted to do this, they didn't have a real forum to discuss it and get encouraged about it, so we're basically tapping in and putting into action an interest that was already latent there. And out of all that, based on SB 20, SB 4, sorry, the 20 units, the acre, applied to those three that I mentioned gets you to the 65. And those would be affordable units. We wouldn't expect any market rate component to that, because it would just be coming from a different place. And I think that's it for my slides, and I'm going to pass it back to Brandon to bring it home.
Thank you, Victoria. So the question is, does it all add up? And the answer is simply yes. Flashing up here something that you'll see in Appendix C in the attachments that you have. But this is, this is basically a summary of everything you just saw. We had those big purple numbers. And the point of these programs is to create those new opportunities where we can find opportunities for housing spread throughout the village. And so it gets us to a total number of 469 against our required RENA of 349. And if you remember from the original adoption, that's important, because we need to have a buffer when we go to the state for adoption. We only have to get to that 349, but they expect to see a buffer. And this is early, because we still haven't had the back and forth with the state, you know, telling us if they think our numbers are realistic or not to the level of scrutiny that we're going to see. We've gotten a lot of head nodding from them on these numbers already, but the buffer here is really important to notice. But, like I said, most importantly, you'll see the goal has been accomplished to remove the sites, the two city-owned sites from this matrix here. There are a host of other revisions that I'm going to run through relatively quickly. This one was just an error on our part, it was accidentally, because we had so many versions of this back and forth, we accidentally deleted this program, we'll put it back in. We changed the overnight visitor, so this is the other hotel program. When you convert one hotel room to an employee unit, we're not going to be seeking RENA credit, like affordable units on this. Part of that is strategic, because when you do get RENA credit for something for affordability, and if it doesn't happen to the extent you think it's going to happen, there are potential ramifications in the future, so we're kind of protecting the city a little bit on that one. There are some programs that have been deleted, because they're no longer needed. Most notably are those city-owned sites, like I mentioned. We've done some formatting changes, just to make the document flow better. We've moved those quantified objectives up to the beginning of the program, instead at the end, so you don't have to read all the way through a program and then see at the end, you know, the timing and all that stuff. We've also, you probably noticed in the quantified objectives, those numbers are not fully fleshed out yet. Those are not the RENA numbers, that's a different number. We will get those in there. That's just a number that the state requires us to see, but those are not affordable units that get created. We also went through and updated the dates that have passed, so that the document is contemporary. This was an editorial decision we made as a collective group. We just removed the quotes that were throughout the entire original document, we felt that it was just cluttered and not really needed. And so those are the host of other amendments that you've seen. I think it's important, at this point, to pause and remind everyone that the Planning Commission did recently see this, on May 14th. And I'm going to give you an update, but you have the Planning Commissioners on the dice with you, so I'm not intending to put words in their mouth, but this is what we would typically do at this type of presentation. Generally, the Planning Commission support the revised programs and approach. We did receive some specific feedback from them. One was to ensure that the ADU program, when we get to implementation, has a way to capture those affordable ADUs that are not deed-restricted. And why that's important is because prospectively, right now, we're banking on that 30-30-30-10, or 90% affordable, 10% market rate, that the state gives you. But when they get built, you have to make the case that when they're built, they're still affordable. So unless, unless you can prove that either A, they've been deed-restricted, affordable, or you can make the case that, you know, people are charging less rent for an ADU, or they're letting family members live there for free, if we can find some way to capture that and report that to the state in the annual reporting we do, we'll also get affordable housing credit for that. So that was a really good comment from the Planning Commission, to make sure that when we do the implementation, when we write the program, we include that. We did hear from Commissioner Locke that water is not going to be a barrier. I imagine she will speak to that a little bit tonight as well. Even above the 14-acre-foot allocation the city has already received, that's not really an issue anymore for us. The live-work program, we heard from the Planning Commission, they really liked that as a new program. That is the only new program, really, the rest of them are just revised programs. It brings a lot of diversity into the downtown area, as Councilmember Booter talked about, the mixed-income opportunities. The other information, the other comments and feedback we got was making sure that there's clear communication about how the hotel key program is financially viable. We did a lot of early work, meeting with hotel operators, affordable housing developers, and we got really good interest on that. But it's going to come down to the nuts and bolts of implementation when we write it, to make sure that people actually understand it and want to participate in it. And then, another comment we got was just expressing concern that with the city sites coming off of there, that was the goal, however, we want to make sure that it's clear, those sites are not precluded from development in the future. The city and the city council still has the opportunity to receive proposals for those sites in the future. We're just not beholden to a state timeline anymore. It's still our property, we can do whatever we want with it. But the idea between, behind bringing it off of the housing element is we're just not stuck with the state's timing anymore. So what are the key takeaways from this presentation that you've sat through so patiently, and we thank you very much? The big one is that it accomplishes our goal of dispersing those 149 affordable units better throughout the city. This is an early draft, please remember that, of Chapter 2 in Appendix C. You're gonna see implementation coming back through again. Implementation is where the rubber meets the road, and we really refine some of these programs. The substance of the revisions tonight focused on those five strategies and the sites inventory. As I mentioned, there are other revisions included in the proposal, but they're not as substantive as the two that I just talked about, the strategies and the sites inventory. It is important also to note that those numbers of units, I mentioned the buffer, those are still subject to change based on review by the state HCD. Like I said, we've gotten early, really positive feedback from them, we've met with them a lot intentionally, so that when we send it off to them, we're not going to be surprised, we don't believe, but we can't promise what happens at the state level. So those numbers are still subject to change, which is why we feel confident in having that buffer. And this is a really important thing to think about for a second, is that this approach of spreading the units throughout the city and creating these new programs that have the ability to yield into the future. If you noticed, we don't have every church on this list. We're going to have to come back in Cycle 7 and have new ideas and new sites. If we can continue to repeat these same opportunities, you know, new churches, churches that aren't on this cycle, we'll be allowed to use those next cycle. So this approach of diversifying our portfolio of affordable housing throughout the city sets us up for future cycles, Cycle 7, Cycle 8, because we don't know what's going to happen then. So that's a big takeaway from this opportunity. So you'll probably notice that I didn't do the normal thank-yous at the beginning of this, because I find that the last thing you say is often what people remember, and I feel like this is the most important part of this, is I want to thank the AHA Group, our city staff, our consultant Veronica Tam, who is online tonight with us. This has been a really exceptional effort, down to the point that when we're meeting with folks from the state, they're telling us that they've never seen anything like this before. When Councilmember Booter and I were working through some edits, we originally had written, you know, hundreds of hours of volunteer time. And then we edited, and we realized, it's thousands of hours of volunteer time, and that's not an exaggeration. So I think it's really important to thank the residents that came out. You know, speaking on staff's behalf, it's been, it's been really great working with the community on something, when they get this involved in it, and like, having more brains at the table. Our state counterparts, they and our consultant have suggested that the city, once this is done, puts in for a planning award, American Planning Association, because of how unique this effort was. So I think that sheds a light on, you know, how appreciative we should all be for the effort that's put into this. So that's why I saved this till the end, I want to thank everybody. And of course, thank you all for helping us through this, as we've come and met with you at various community meetings. So with that, we are all available for questions and feedback, our consultants online, I'm here, and we have our AHA members as well.
So thank you, Brandon, that was 57 minutes.
Yes. I told you, just under an hour.
Brilliant.
Thank you.
So I'm going to see, so here's what we're going to do, is we're going to go, questions first, from up here, and I'm going to suggest we do those by strategy, just so we don't have people coming back and forth all the time to the microphone. Then we'll go to public comment, public input. And then I'd like to reserve a little bit of time, after we close public comment, to, for staff to, if questions come from the public, to allow you to answer them. And then we'll go to comments, input, et cetera, from the group up here. So for questions first, so first off, questions on the hotel-to-residential for Tim? Yes?
Tim, would you just quickly say, first, thank you for a clear and excellent presentation. Would you speak just very quickly to, how does the, how do the utilities work in the conversions of the water and power? Because you're going from, of course, a single property, right, with a single hotel with many rooms, and then that's being converted into individual apartments. Do you, my simple question is this, do you anticipate any constraints to the conversion that would come from the utilities, the water, the power, the gas?
Tim, come on up, please.
And it may just be no.
I don't think so. Yeah. And that's, and that's what we kind of factored in that conversion cost on, I think, was, you know, it's, that's, you know, once you get into modifying a building, I guess, you know, there could be some surprises, so, but at this point in time, no. Thank you.
Other questions for Tim on this, on the hotel residential? Please, Jeff.
I have some questions, and I think it would be best to go back to this slide, the pro forma slide. Way back, yeah, way back at the beginning. Yeah, maybe, does Tim have the clicker? Maybe, I'll preface my, so first, thank you, Tim, for all the work that you did, and everybody else, and especially Hans and all those boots-on-the-ground for doing all that downtown work. So very impressive group effort. Maybe go back to the, so I'd like to talk about this slide. I'd like to ask some questions about this slide, but in a sort of background, I think it would be why, like, go back to the previous one slide before. So I'm assuming that the pro forma, really, like, these numbers on the next slide really address that, the part in the middle box, like, what the affordable housing developer sees. So there's not, there are slides on the pro forma, can, yeah, I think you all can hear me. There are slides on the pro forma that talk about the purchase of the hotel, and then the sale of the hotel key rooms. So I'm assuming that this is, that these numbers apply to that middle box.
Correct.
Okay. So now let's go to the next slide. So I had a conversation with Brandon about most of what I'm going to ask you. So, excuse me, the purchase of the hotel, so in this, in this slide, there's a 19-room hotel that's costed out at 5887. Do you know where that number came from?
Yeah. Like I said, this is just a summary, so I have the detail here. So that 5887, the value, so there's a valuation method that Mark associate attached to that. He took what's called a gross rent multiplier, which is six, and a cap rate value of 6%. And those came up, those formulations came up with two numbers, 5.9 million and 5.8 million rounded up. And so he took the average of those two to get the 5887283.
Okay. So I'm, so one of my questions is, I'm having a little bit of a problem with that number because of two recent actual sales, and Carmel Svengard's hotel sold a year ago, or less than a year ago, for $17 million, and it was 35 rooms. So that's not $310,000 a room, like is listed up here, that's almost $500,000 a room.
Yeah. Well, we went very conservative.
So Brandon and I, so, so that's what Brandon told me. And so, the issue I have with that statement, and I know you won't take this personally, is that the, using a $310,000 number is not conservative. The conservative number would have been $500,000, because the use of the $310,000 number serves to decrease the developer investment, which serves to increase the ROI. So if the developer investment had been, let's say, $9.5 million, then the profit would have been $1.3 million, and the ROI would have been 15% or something like that. So I would ask you to, so I'll make my ask sort of at the end.
Okay.
But using the $310,000 number is not conservative. And I would ask you to sort of figure out what the right number is, given Svengard, the fireplace inn sold for $425,000 a room as well, also higher than 310. So this, the 44% number, I don't believe is correct.
Right.
So it should be, so the number on this slide, given my, what I think the numbers are, would be like 15%, which makes this less, less attractive, and I'll talk about that in a second, either my closing remarks or in a second.
Okay. So just to add something to this, so we're looking at, Mark was looking at underperforming hotels. And this particular example was, you know, from a 19-room hotel with an average daily room rate of $211, and a revenue per available room of $143, which is really low.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So that's a completely valid point, and I don't know, so I think I would ask you to help me understand then the difference between $310,000 and $500,000. So I get your point.
Got it.
That that's an underperforming hotel, and I don't know whether fireplaces, Svengards are underperforming or not.
Yeah, one thing, and I apologize, because I didn't get a chance to connect with Tim, but I did call Mark Watson, who's luckily in Hawaii right now, lucky guy. But he did tell me that in all of his market research, that those two recent sales that you're mentioning were what he considered atypical valuations for those two properties. He did a wider market search and found that this $300,000 was a more, more applicable number for the sale price. So for what that's worth, that was what Mark's research yielded, and I think that the more detailed pro forma that Tim showed the backup to that would have that, we don't have that here tonight, but we will make sure that we have the correct number.
I would like to see that.
Yeah, absolutely.
At some point, before we, before it comes back. And then the other thing is the, so I was trying to pencil out the $300,000 number on the sales of hotel key rooms, and again, I had a conversation with Brandon about this. And I was working, I was working sort of from the assumption that the keys would be sold to, like, someone who was going to build a new hotel in a parking lot. And Brandon told me that that was sort of the least, the least attractive option in terms of how these keys might be used. So other key, other examples might be, you know, the council heard a couple of years ago, on-again, off-again desire by LaPlay, one of the hotels to expand out over their parking lot, right, Ilford and I, Ilford and I, the Pine End, to expand out over their parking lot. And while they talked about making some of their hotel rooms smaller, and then putting in large, some of their hotel rooms larger, and moving those units over to the parking lot, I would like to see if something like this, I would like to see some numbers that would help me understand how this program pencils out, like, more detail than what's on this sheet, because I'm not sure I believe the sheet. I'm not sure I believe this. So in the future, maybe next time, or sort of in the, in the intermediate time period, we might, we might do that.
Okay. So just to make sure I understand that, so what you're looking for is... Okay. So just to make sure I understand that. So what you're looking for is maybe a pro forma related to selling hotel keys to an already existing hotel?
That already owns the space and is going to densify their hotel rooms. So how, you know, will they really pay $300,000 for a key, for the ability to, like, I'd like you, I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the $300,000 number sort of penciled out a little bit, or justified a little bit.
Great. And, and again, we're, that $300,000 is because of what you just mentioned about Svengard's and the other hotel. The, if the keys now are available, and they're on the market, and we have a 948-room cap, they're going to be worth more than $300,000.
Okay. Well, then you shouldn't have any trouble.
I know.
An interesting way to do that, and I'm, I'm going to leave you to do that, but an interesting way to do that would be to simply ask the owners of Svengard's, you know, Svengard's has a big parking lot.
Exactly.
And so it would be interesting to ask them how much they would pay for, like, to me, that would be an interesting exercise, to ask them how much they would pay for one of these keys, so that they could make that moderately, I guess, by your words, moderately performing hotel into a larger, into a larger moderated.
Okay. And, and Mark has talked about those types of ideas, so that's great. We'll get it.
And I would like to say, sort of, you know, sort of upfront in preference to sort of all my comments, I believe in, like, I believe in this program. Like, I think this is a great program. My concern, you know, and I also believe that the city needs to facilitate more housing for the survival of our residential city. Like, you know, where, as Hans says, the city is being hollowed out by, by more and more empty homes. And I think this effort is really vital. And where I'm sort of going, and I'll talk about this in my remarks, but you'll hear it over again in a couple of other questions, is I wonder whether this program needs to be, you know, to Victoria's comments about the church program, the religious institutions program, I wonder whether this program needs to be incentivized to make it work as well. Like that, my concern is that this won't pencil, in the end, this won't pencil out, and that we need to sort of figure out how to get it, how to get it to pencil out. So that's sort of a, that sort of lies underneath all of my, you know, basically everything I'm going to say tonight. But thank you for, thank you for the work.
Other questions for Tim, or just on this topic? Because we are going to have comments later.
Can I ask a general question?
Absolutely.
This is a general question for staff. We have, under the affordable category, we have three different levels of affordability. So are all of those levels of affordability have to be controlled by some form of a deed restriction?
Yes. Any, any affordable unit has to be controlled by a deed restriction. And it's reported annually, income verify and all that.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I think we need to understand that in the context of all of the, what is being proposed here.
Chair, can I take a stab at answering Jeff's question?
Sure.
About the value of the hotel keys. So kind of, in a way, like in real, commercial real estate, one of the questions you're asking is, is almost for sort of a, kind of a residual land value analysis, to try to figure out how much could somebody afford to pay for one of those hotel keys. And so one way to think about it is just to sort of back into it. And, you know, in general, people are going to be building hotel, like, the gap in the market in Carmel is for the, the uber luxury hotel, right? And so the, the assumption in talking to folks is that you'd be taking this underperforming hotel and converting it to a super high-end hotel, right, which we really don't have, right? We don't have the Ventana, or the Post Ranchin, or the Bernardes, you know, here in Carmel. And so I'm just going to run through some numbers, and you can quibble with, maybe it should be lower or higher on certain things. But if you took and you said, hey, 1,200 bucks a night, times 60% occupancy, gets you to about $263,000 of revenue annually. And then if you assume that 50% of that revenue gets eaten up by operating expenses in a hotel, that gets you to about $131,000 of net operating income. And if you take, what are you guys using on the hotels, a six cap?
Mm-hmm.
If you take a six cap, that works out to a value of $2.2 million, right? So if they go and they build that hotel unit, they could then sell it for $2.2 million, right? And so, say somebody's spending $1,200 a square foot to build that hotel unit, say it's a $300, 300-square-foot room, that's 360 grand. And so you're spending 360 grand, maybe you already own the land, right? They might be acquiring a property to do this, which would add some cost in there. But you could have people that already own the dirt, right? And they're literally, their only cost is, how much is it going to cost me to build this hotel room? And how much is it going to cost me for the keys? So if you're telling me that, like, I'm going to spend 360 grand, plus X, and I'm going to net, I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, get gross $2.2 million for it, can they afford to spend upwards of $300,000 on that? Yeah, they really can. So.
Thank you, Hans. All right. Other questions for Tim? All right, let's move on to the downtown live, sorry, mixed income. Questions for Hans? No questions for Hans on mixed income, on live work? Nope. ADUs for Nancy?
One question.
Please.
Another question for staff. So on the mixed income, we're going to have to have a zoning change, or a code amendment for the higher density?
Yeah. So there's a distinction that we talked about over and over again with the housing element amendment was zoning change versus zoning code amendment. So thank you for bringing that up. A zoning change, think about colors on a map, and those colors allow different intensities of use. That's a zoning change. That's a big lift. That's when you're changing your general plan, and what that land can be used for, and how intensely it can be used in the future. A zoning code amendment is where you change the text in Title 17, which is our zoning code, to allow things like what that density is. So to your, to your question, Chair LePage, this would be just a zoning code amendment, not a zoning code change.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yep, you're welcome.
Questions, ADUs? No.
Nancy, are you still with us?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you for awesome work and awesome presentation. Simple question. The, our, this amendment, of course, is going, taking us through till the end of Cycle 6, which is 2031. You shared with us that we've got about 45 in the pipeline to date, and the, the target goal, or the estimated goal for this program is a total of 77 units. If we already have 45 in the pipeline, how many more are we going to get in the next six years? You know, the, the numbers don't make sense to me.
So there's two points here. I guess I need to do a checkpoint with Marty, because as you see in the, the full roll-up chart that Brandon showed at the end of all of our presentations, there were some that were credited towards pipeline that are already in the, the numbers at the high level. So that what we've been working on, of course, is to not only take the, the original quantity of 30 units that were net new, and up-level them to this new number that you see here. So it's not real clear in what we presented, what was pipeline in the roll-up numbers, and what truly are the net new. But you're calling out that, that we are making significant progress right now, and that's true, and that's a good thing. And we can end up in an overachievement of, in this particular category. And again, our challenge is to make sure that, or to sway and influence the delivery of ADUs that fit this low and affordable rent rates. So again, there's some squishiness in, as you're calling out to, you know, the numbers, so we need to provide more clarity on that, so we can take that as, as a follow-up. And I did, didn't mention, so I've got a moment to, to speak, that one of the, the aspirations of work with ADUs are to, to acknowledge the fact that we've got many second homeowner's homes in our village, and to have those take on ADUs and/or make potentially not official ADU units into ADU units through conversions and the like, that we really look to have, bring life to those resident locations, those properties, through putting viable renters into those properties, so that they can also provide, keep watch over the primary residents. So I think there's another kind of ancillary benefit to continuing to leverage ADUs in what we do with housing throughout our community, but ones that fit our, our world of, and the small lots in our village. So there's some homework to do with your question.
Thank you. And one thing that I would like to see, before we, we come back and see this again, I would like to see a timeline for rolling out that rental encouragement program that you spoke to, because these ADUs, in order to be recognized at the moment as affordable, need to be deed restricted. So I think that rental encouragement program is going to be very important. And I would also, when we see this again, I'd, I'd like to have a timeline on when that updated ADU ordinance would be ready, and also the pre-approved ADU plans. So what, I realize that all of those three elements are not going to be ready when we see this again, but I do think it would be a good form for us to have, to have a timeline where we will have those completed.
Great. You bet.
I've got some of the numbers here. I can just read off the, so 2019 was four ADUs, 2020 was eight ADUs, 2021 was nine, 2022 was eight, 2023 was 13, and 2024 was 24 ADUs. So eight, 13, 24 the past three years.
Thank you, Hans. And you know I have to ask, how many of those were deed restricted?
Yeah.
Yeah, we really didn't have a deed restricted model in place.
I would, I would, I would clarify just one.
And what, what our obligation that Veronica Tim has reinforced with her knowledge and insights is that what we really owe in these annual reports are some assurances that the affordable, that the lower affordable dollar rental rates are relevant, not that they are necessarily low income. So we just need to have affirmation that the rate upon which they are being rented fits the affordable categories. So it's a little bit of a different view.
Just to restate that in another word, even if an ADU is not deed restricted, say we do a survey of ADU owners, and they tell us, hey, the rent is X, and that rent is at an affordable level, say they're renting it at low cost or no cost to a family member or a child, et cetera, a caregiver, that would qualify for the purposes of these annual reviews as an affordable unit. So it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be deed restricted for us to get credit. Of course, like, there's a benefit to be, it being deed restricted in the real world, to make sure that it's serving the purpose, but.
And we still need a program to, to collect all that data. Thank you.
Yes.
Because that was actually, I'm, just my question was, I think you just clarified it, that, because follow on to Michael's question, that we only get, it has to be deed restricted to qualify as one of the lower-income things. But for ADUs, that's not necessarily true.
That's, that's correct. Thank you. Yeah. And, you know, that we don't, that was my point earlier, that was a comment that came out of the planning commission, actually it was Commissioner Locke's comment. We, one of the, one of our takeaways was, in the language of the program, we need to make sure that the program as written, because there is an ADU program already, it doesn't preclude us from adding that count on to be able to report to the state. We're pretty sure that it doesn't, but that's one of the things we'll take on as staff in this next revision, is making sure that we'll have a way to collect the data on what people are actually charging for the rent. But you're correct, ADUs are, had and have been through this whole time with the whole 9, 30, 30, 30, 10. They're a bit of an outlier in all of this.
And that the, the state will allow this, you know, 30, 30, 30, 10.
Prospectively.
They'll allow that from a planning perspective, but then once you've built them, they may decide, never mind, they don't allow them.
You have to prove that it somehow is affordable, not necessarily deed restricted, but that it's affordable when compared against other rentals in town.
Do you have to prove that it's rented?
I don't believe so. Yeah.
I have a, I have a.
Actually, no, I can say for sure. We asked our consultant that, I'm sorry, sir. We asked our consultant that. We just have to show that it's, it's offered.
Okay. I have a question not related to that. And I don't know whether this is for Nancy or Brandon. So Nancy talked about amnesty, like an amnesty program. I know we did that maybe two decades ago. What does the city get for amnesty? Like, let's say someone has an illegal rental that wasn't grandfathered in 20 years ago when we went through this then. What do, what do, what does the city get for legalizing this?
It's a great question. What we get is, we get to put one more check mark in our annual report to the state for an ADU that was created that doesn't currently exist. Even though it may physically exist, on paper, it doesn't exist.
Okay. So I talked about that.
Yeah.
Ten minutes ago. Do we get, like, a deed restriction that requires the unit to be rented in the future? So let's say that, you know, I have an illegal rental, I don't. Let's say that I had an illegal rental in my house, and I had a, I had it grandfathered in, I really don't.
You get that in it?
Not in my basement. Not in my basement. Not in my basement, wink, wink. And, and the city came by and legalized my, not in my basement, ADU. And then I sell my house.
Sure.
You know, there's a, ADU is sort of a term of art, and we have, we have granny units, you know, through some, the 20-year-ago program, and now we have an ADU. Like, does that ADU license or verification or whatever, like, transfer over to the new owners? Like, how does that?
These are great questions, and I will, I will hope, hope that you ask them again when we get to implementation, because this is very much an implementation thing, where, when we come back to you with an implementation program for ADUs, and if amnesty is one of those things, we're going to have to craft that amnesty program, and you'll be able to tell us, you only get amnesty if you give us a deed restriction, or if you guarantee us you're going to rent it at a certain rate. So we, we haven't fleshed all that out yet, but the idea with amnesty is that the city should get something out of granting amnesty for an illegally constructed unit.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of curious, because it seems like that question, like deed restriction, and, you know, my next question, now that I won't ask it, was going to be about low-income requirements for, you know, as part of this amnesty program. It seems like the amnesty program sort of affects how much credit we get for this program, doesn't it? Because that would affect how many people are going to be coming in the door to sign up for the amnesty program.
Sure. Yeah.
Right? So how can the state give us credit for, you know, 20, 20, you know, 20 units that are generated out of the amnesty program if we haven't told, I'm, I'm actually curious, if we haven't told them what the amnesty program is, and how likely we, how likely we think that it will be taken advantage of by people that have illegal, not me, illegal ADUs on their property?
Well, bear in mind, even a market-rate unit, if someone came in and got amnesty for an ADU, and we didn't have any deed restriction, that still helps us with our RENA. That's still a housing number. It's just not affordable unit at the end of the day.
I think that, I think it's important to recognize that the, the ADU is, it's the only one of these programs where there's not some subjective decision by HCD about how much credit they're going to give you. It's formulaic, so they look at historical production, and then they say, what's your average per year? So we basically said, hey, our average per year is 10, based on our revised numbers that I shared earlier. And then we said, hey, there's seven years left in the planning period, seven times 10 is 70. The only part that's somewhat subjective on the state's part is, we're then asking for a quote-unquote boost, and we're asking for a 10% boost over the 70 to get us to 77. And the boost is predicated on some of these programs. So, so there is some subjective part where, where that comes into play, but in general, most of the credit is already baked.
If I can just offer a couple other just quick points on amnesty. I mean, so from a homeowner's perspective, if you have an illegal unit, it, because you're required to bring your unit up to health and safety code if it's not already, but that needs to be verified, that reduces the risk to the occupants. It reduces the liability, because insurance will not cover if something is triggered from an illegal unit. And it increases property value, as we all know, because of the income potential there. And it's a peace of mind, because you've got, you know, again, that reinforcement that you, you've made your unit official and you've made your unit official and designated as a, as a rental unit, whether, you know, it's for a healthcare worker, for you onsite, or someone to watch over your property. So there's, there's other aspects to that, and there is state law that requires amnesty and has some stipulations in it that we'll need to comply with. We can always do what the state law requires, but we can add more to it, to the discussion that just preceded.
What does that mean, that, sorry Nancy, what does that mean, that there's state law that requires us to have an amnesty program?
It's, AB 2533 requires amnesty programs be implemented in all jurisdictions. So there is an existing law, and so we're embracing that in the work ahead.
Thank you very much.
I just, I had a quick question, it's actually for Jeff, which is, you know, I think this is an opportunity for us to have this, a little bit of a conversation, maybe get some direction, so as we're putting together, you know, a potential amnesty program, and the staff is working on that, like, what, what do you want the city to get?
Well, let's see. Yes or no?
Can we do this later? Can we have the questions? Thanks. Other questions?
Brandon, if you could get up. This is sort of a general question, let's just say I'm a developer, and I've been watching the last five to six, seven years, seeing what developers have been willing to build any kind of housing in this town that's new. And I know of three projects in particular, two of which are large, one of which is small, and you know what it is. Not saying that there weren't problems with the developer themselves, but it's been painful for those people trying to build those projects, and they're still not built. I'm looking from the sidelines, saying, all right, if I was willing to do 20% of the units in those projects, affordable, tell me what, why it would look different, and why I should bring my money into this town and start building housing. How much faster would those projects have happened if I had said 20%, given the parking, less parking, lots of other things, and free water?
Yeah. Well, as you notice, there is a theme across all of the programs, one of the incentives was expedited permit processing. We recognize that that's a barrier, that means that you jump to the front of the line when, with the applications, and you also jump to the front of the line with getting to whoever the decision maker is, whether it's, you know, staff level, planning commissioner, city council. So we have that baked in as an incentive to all of these, because we recognize that that's a big, that's a big barrier, on top of the incentives of water and permit fees. So we recognize that for sure. So I think that that's the first answer to your question, is that's why people would want to bring their money into town, because they would know that they get to jump to the front of the line. As we're working out these incentives in the implementation side of things, we can get into really clear specifics. You know, one of the, one of the things we can do is for affordable housing projects, they're also going to potentially have access to objective design standards, which is going to lay out the playing field very clear, what a project has to look like, more clear than our existing code does. So that could be an option as well. But we'll craft these incentives, knowing that, you know, the direction we're trying to get tonight from you all as policy setters, is, are you, are you comfortable with the notion of providing someone who's going to give the city some affordable units at some percentage level, a streamlined path in front of everybody else? If you tell us tonight, yes, that's something we want baked into this, then that's what the program's going to say we're going to do. And then when we come back on the heels of that, and actually write the implementation, and bring it back through all of you, that's when we'll get the nuts and bolts of how we really make it as attractive as possible. And we'll reach out to developers, this is part of, just like we've done with crafting the programs, we'll reach out to local developers and find out what could have made it better for them.
So are you saying that instead of five years, it takes a year?
I can't put a number on it for you, but it'll be faster, because it is, it is a two-way street, obviously. I mean, there are, there are things that, you know, we have to get from developers, your plans have to have certain information on them. But the honest goal of this is to make it much faster for developers.
What's your vision, like, what, what could it look like?
I mean, a year. I mean, that would be, that would be a dream, to be able to, you know, get a large-scale housing project through the whole process in a year. And I don't think that that's impossible.
Okay, and you really feel that?
I really do. Yeah, genuinely.
Thank you.
So finally, questions on churches, religious sites.
I have a quick question, I promise I'll be quick for Victoria. You talked about, one of the things I found that was pretty interesting, you talked about total billing site versus unused site. Do you have like, like one example from one of the three churches in terms of like, what the total building site for that property is, and what the, what the unused portion of that property is, like in part, the form of parking lots, or foliage, or whatever it is?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just going to picture in my mind, because I don't have it with me, but like, just take Church of the Wayfarer right here. It's primarily built, but I would argue, that looks to me like about a quarter of the site is, does not have a building on it.
How big do you think that property is?
I mean, if Marnie were here, she'd know off the top of her head. I have it written now, I can, I can go back and look it up, but, you know, and then the mission, of course, is a teeny fraction of the 12 acres that they have. The All Saints is, probably about two-thirds built. The Christ Science.
Way less than two-thirds, it seems, from.
Less than two-thirds with buildings on it?
Built. No?
I mean, I was just there, I'm just off the top of my head. And then the Christ Scientist has quite a few parcels that are unbuilt, so maybe more like half to, a little bit less than half unbuilt, I would argue. But that's, I can literally tell you, if I just can go back to my.
Okay, I'll, you circle back to this. Later, yeah, I appreciate the answer.
So Mel had a question.
You mentioned on your slide, and thank you, of course, for everything that you've done. You mentioned the byright for the church sites for development. Would the church sites also be subject to objective design and development standards? Or does the state's law preclude that?
So, Brandon's going to help me out here, but I think this is, this is a, we're in the terrain of the state getting to decide this, not, not us. On the other hand, I think one of the benefits of all this outreach is forging relationships with the churches that make them want to do buildings that we all love. I actually think that's what we're doing here. We can only go on faith in terms of, of cooperation and that realm. And I actually think that we have that ability to do that. So the types of architects that are getting involved, the types of conversations we're having, this is about complying with the spirit and the letter of the law, even when they don't have to. So it's weird.
It sounds like, no, it sounds like objective design and development standards won't apply on our church sites?
No, I think they will apply, it's just that we, I don't think we're going to be in much danger personally, that's my view.
Oh, I, yes, I hear that, thank you.
Yeah, if we want, we have our consultant Veronica Tam online, who's our, you know, sort of been our expert with navigating state law with respect to things like this. So Veronica, if you wouldn't mind, just the, the simple question is, for church sites that are 100% affordable, will they, will they be processed, they'll be allowed to be processed or required to be processed under objective design standards?
Zoom disc crashed.
Zoom disc crashed. IT, are you able to unmute Veronica Tam? We just had a computer crash up here in the, in the chambers.
Brandon, hi, it's Mary Wagner, I do see Veronica Tam in the attendee list, and she needs to be promoted to a panelist.
Okay, great. Maybe Dan or Reese, if you guys can promote Veronica Tam to a panelist for me.
And while they're doing that, if I may, Brandon, I've been working on some of these projects, and can weigh in too. Veronica's here now, if you'd like her to respond first.
Yes, I think generally, I would say that, based on all the direction of how state law goes, as a, 100%, affordable housing project using SB4, most likely you will have to go through objective design standards.
I would agree with that, too, if the city, if the town has adopted objective design standards, so you, you would be able to do that under SB4 if the project otherwise qualifies for processing under SB4.
Thanks. And as you all know, that's one of our programs, is to adopt objective design standards. Thank you both.
All right, great. Great questions, thank you. We're going to go to the public. Just as a reminder to not only the public, but to all of us, the housing element is a planning document, and when we come out of here, the next step is to go back to the state to do something that may have never been done before, which is to recertify the housing element. It's happened before? So we're not as special as we think?
We're just very special.
Not uniquely special. And really, this is all about getting to go, and that there's a lot of, I mean, we can ask questions about implementation for a long, long time, and the answer's going to be the same, which is, yes, we're going to talk about that in implementation. So if we want to ask a lot of questions about implementation, we'll be here a long time, and the answer probably won't change much. But it's public comment, it's comment up here, take it in any, any direction you want to. So public comment, who would like to speak? Yes, Julia.
Is that going for listening?
And in general, we go with the, with the three-minute rule, there's three, that's nine, but three would be good.
That's okay. My name is Julia Christopher, I have Photography West Gallery, I'm a third-generation resident, second-generation business owner, come from a line of trailblazing women, and my mom was an SBA startup, which I'm very proud of. She came from nothing, and she built something, and we are dedicated to supporting artists of the community. I don't know if you know this, but Carmel was really the birthplace of photography as fine art. Steinbeck was from here, I mean, some of the greatest writers and artists in American history come from Carmel. And I just happen to have a couple with me. So Zach, if you would just introduce yourselves.
Hi, everybody, my name is Zach Weston, I'm a fourth-generation photographer from this area. Obviously, my great-grandfather, you know, he was in here late twenties, early thirties, and actually built his home in 1938 in Carmel Highlands, and so been here ever since. Recently had a child, so I have the fifth generation, and we live down the coast. I am a photographer, I run a photography nonprofit in this area, as well as helped my parents run a photography business.
Hello, my name is Alexi Shevitt, actually, I'm fifth-generation artist, and after 14 years, finally came to Carmel and made sixth-generation folks here. My specialization, photography, paintings, and clothing design.
So, thank you, and thank you for, also to the AHA group for all your hard work, because we are some of the people who need the housing. And I just thought it was important that you, you also see some of us represented, because I know that you've been working really hard, but there's also like a dire sense of urgency, that a lot of my friends have lost their homes due to Prop 19, we're all getting pushed out of the area, the rents are going up. I'm seeing a lot of the long-term housing be converted into short-term, Airbnbs or 30-day rentals. And so, I really, really, really appreciate what you're doing, because we're all kind of, you just had to move to Palo, Colorado, didn't you? So we're, we're all getting kind of pushed out of the area, and we would like to come back and make this the artist creative community that it has always been, and not just, you know, a place where people come to vacation, which is important, too. That said, I wanted to throw another hat in the ring, because I heard your public outcry, you know, we need the housing, but we also desperately need parking. And, I mean, that's a huge issue. I bumped into Bob on the street, and we were just talking about, you know, how desperately we need parking. And I also understand it was explained to me why the city-owned sites are being removed to allow for more control over the development, we don't want Sacramento taking over control of our city-owned sites. That said, I have a proposal that I brought with me that will add 205 underground parking spots, which is 77 in addition to the 128 that are currently there. It's a beautiful, absolutely beautiful project, it allows for artists and residents housing a new city of commerce center and a new art gallery and museum. Again, this is, I would just like to stress, an emergency, and I know there's an RFP process, if you want to open that. There is also a state ordinance that allows any emergency situations for cities to partner to do a P3. And this developer is one of the greatest developers in the world, I've seen what he's done. It's extraordinary, and the fact that he's willing to help us is extraordinary, and it would really mean a lot to us if you would at least consider it. In addition, it also adds 28 affordable housing units. So I would just like to submit this to the city clerk, right over here. Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Who else would like to address us here? Maria?
Hello, my name is Maria Ruess, and actually, the spelling's R-U-E-S-S, by the way, for the future, but, a couple things, I sent comments already, and I hope they were distributed to all of you. I think the most important thing is, we were talking about the changes to Chapter 2 and the appendixy. I think there's a couple of elements. Number one, the quantify objective summary, we need to have the numbers that you already presented, Brandon, you have a number associated with each of your five priorities, those are the numbers you have right now, those are the numbers we're counting. Why aren't we putting those in the document? They should be put in front of the document as quantify objective summary, as we had it before. Regarding ADUs, and I've been saying this since the beginning, I'm sorry, ADUs are not accountable for affordable housing until we make, either deed restricted, or we really have a way of making sure that those who build them are going to do that. Because right now, we have, we're counting 77, and I know, I have this conversation with Nancy before, and I agree, it's a huge number compared to the prior behaviors that we had, but 77 out of those, we say 23 for low income, and 23 for medium-low income, there's no way. I'm sorry, those are all going to go to moderate and high. So unless we implement ADUs with a requirement that says that those are going to be rented for really mixing, why we, solving this solution for affordable housing, they're not, they shouldn't be counted in this exercise, is my opinion. A few other things, I think, and I know Chair Lepage, you said this before, I believe we have two, three sites that are owned by the city, the two sites, the Sunset Center as well as the Visal Owas, they ought to remain in the document, we already told the state that we're going to do something about it. We also have better control, because they're owned by the city. Right now, and I love the work that the AHA group has done, and very creative stuff, however, a lot of them require private funding, a lot of their require funding from the owners or the people on those sites. Right now, we own the sites, we can create RFPs to utilize the sites that are owned by the city, so we can develop affordable housing. So I would recommend that even though it's an amendment to add these five priorities, we leave some of the sites that we were originally identified on our list, as well as the three top, top sites, the two Sunset Center and the Visal Owas, is my opinion. One last thing, if I, to you, Commissioner Locke, there's an element of the water distribution prioritization listed in the document. I stated that we should leave it there as saying that it should be used with the additional 14 half acre, foot acre, whatever you define that, that be rated, written there so that it is used for affordable housing. And therefore, we determine how that is being done. Right now, we're just saying, we're just changing the wording to just say prioritize for affordable water. You know what I mean? No, we had to keep the language that was there before, that basically said that that will be one of our top priorities. So, and last element, I think if we can increase affordable housing, we can give housing to our artists, not only artists, students, people that work in our community, and people that want to live in our community, like younger families, that would be great. We're all aging, and honestly, we need a more vibrant city. Instead of losing population, we need to increase our population. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maria. Other public comment?
Nobody's online.
Nobody's online?
Yeah.
All right, I will shut public, shut down public comment. Brandon, did you want to answer any of the things brought up by the public there?
You got a hand up there, Bob.
Oh.
Just went up.
Karen Ferlito. I'm reopening public comment.
I'm very pleased to hear a lot of this report. I do have some questions. I agree with Maria that I have big concerns about how many ADUs are being built that will never be affordable housing, they will only be an extension and an. will never be affordable housing, they will only be an extension and an increase in the floor area ratio. I know of a few that are already just being rented at 30 days at a time, that is not affordable housing. I also think that any water that is used as an incentive for ADUs should only be given out if it truly is going to be an affordable unit. And as far as amnesty, several years ago, the city did go through what Councilmember Barron mentioned, which allowed units to be reclassified as affordable units, or actually, in other words, legal subordinate units, and those could also be part of that amnesty, it doesn't just have to be illegal, illegally-produced guest homes, there are many in the city that were deemed legal subordinate units, so that should be in there as well. My last concern is, and this was an idea that came up while we were doing the housing element before, about the foundation being sort of a clearing ground for helping people rent their units. I want to make sure that if they are the clearinghouse, we get many age groups of people qualifying for those affordable units, not just the overflow from the waitlist for the foundation housing, because we need to revitalize our community with all age groups, and I think that's extremely important, that we remember that. But thank you, I think a lot of good work has been done. I am concerned that all of this relies on private people doing this, and that I still believe that the city's most viable opportunities are with property that they already own. I hope that this outreach to private developers, private owners works, but I am not clear that it will ultimately work. So that is my concern, thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. And Linda?
Yes, Linda Smith here, I just want to concur with Karen's comments about ADUs, and just tell you what I think is going to happen, and it's reflected right next door to me. When the current owner bought it, there were at least 12 oaks. Over the period of time that that person has owned it, that number has been reduced, they was allowed to take out something like six oaks, or seven, and none were replaced. Three have died, this is a property that had at least 20 oaks on it 20 years ago, there are now three left. The area where trees could, native trees could have been replanted, had they been required, has now been taken up by an 850-square-foot ADU, and there is no further room on that lot for any tree to actually be planted. So I see this sort of playing out throughout the town, and I'd just like to speak up for the original residents of Carmel that are the trees, the pines and the oaks and all the understory, but the pines and the oaks in particular, that are just dwindling, particularly the pines, which were, which are the keystone species of our area, and also the iconic tree of Carmel. So that is my concern, while I really do appreciate the work the AHA group has done, and realize there's a real need for housing. I know many people who are being pushed out of the area, and elderly who are having a hard time paying rent on their social security incomes, so it's much needed, but please do be careful with these ADUs, and remember what Carmel is, it's a residential community in a forest, and we got to protect that, because that is our identity. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else? All right, we will shut public comment down.
Again.
Thank you very much, just a couple of answers, as you requested, I just, this is worth just a reminder, you know, we said it earlier in our presentation, the two city sites are not precluded from development, they're just proposed to be taken out of the housing element, so that they're not on a deadline. The city council at any time, you know, you're going to be talking about your priorities tomorrow at a special meeting, strategic priorities, the city council at any time could say, we want to make the development of Sunset or Vista Lobos a priority, and have staff look into an RFP process, so that taking them out of the housing element does not preclude them from being developed with any kind of project. We also had, with the question about ADUs, you know, not getting incentives because they're likely not going to be affordable housing, I think all of us in the group agree with that. In fact, if you remember from Nancy's presentation, one of her bullets said, the only incentives we're looking at giving are those that would ensure that an ADU would get some sort of affordability guarantee. So we're not looking to give any incentive for an ADU that's just going to be a market-rate ADU. ADUs still have a host of laws from the state that help them get through the process faster, but we're not going to make that easier for someone to get an ADU that isn't affordable. And then the last note, just as a reminder, on the trees with respect to ADUs, there are still regulations in place for trees respective of ADUs. They are not a clear-cut guarantee, because our trees are part of our local coastal program, and ADU laws can't do anything to make the effect of your local coastal program less effective. So we still have tree regulations for ADUs.
Thank you. Yeah, well, as I looked at ADUs, sorry, this is a comment, but it really was maddening that the state basically said, in the name of housing, you must allow ADUs to be built, and, you know, period, and, but then they didn't follow that up with an insistence that they be deed-restricted, and actually, for the first six years after they passed that bill, they didn't even allow you to claim credit, claim ADUs as housing, even though they told us you had to build them for housing. So it's just kind of nuts, and it still is, I don't know that ADUs ever will sort out. So that was a comment, not a question. Let's open this up for comments on these documents, on Chapter Two and on the appendix. Anybody want to start?
Thank you, Mayor Perotem. First, I wanted to thank everyone for the presentation, and I'm so grateful to the AHA group and their tremendous efforts and time that they put in to amend the housing element so that it fits better with our community, it's integrated, and there's a greater chance that this housing will be built, and also that the city-owned sites are taken off the list. I'm also very impressed that we had a much better, smarter consultant that was much more in tune with our community and working with us, actually at a fraction of the price that we paid the earlier consultant, who didn't seem to understand our community, and basically put together a plan, so we got the okay from HCD in April of 2024, which was important, but, you know, we had Veronica Tam working for $60,000, and EMC planning got close to $400,000. And also, thank you for the planning staff, for all of your work. This plan goes back to the roots and foundation of our downtown with a focus on the live-work concept, and it also uses conversion of existing buildings rather than new construction. Just a couple of questions and comments, we're still looking at usually 350 to 450-square-foot units, which are small and much more suited for an individual versus a family that would need more space. Chair LaPage already asked about the zoning changes and municipal code changes that would be needed to be done, so that the residential parts of the downtown buildings would be code-compliant. It's also much more appropriate that the units are scattered and integrated in the downtown, as opposed to concentrated in one or three massive structures on the city-owned sites. We don't want to do large-scale densified buildings on Carmel, we want to do human scale, as Hans mentioned. Now that we have worked so hard to get the city-owned lots off of the inventory, I do not want to see any development on Sunset Center Lot, nor the Vista Lobos Lot, and that means no luxury condo buildings, or five-star hotels, or parking structures. I believe it's important that we leave our city-owned lots as open space, the Sunset Center is a national historic landmark and needs to be seen on all sides and not blocked by any sort of structure, and Vista Lobos has a view shed that must be enjoyed by and maintained for the public. A couple of questions I had, Brandon, you might be able to answer this afterwards, is, has the first version of the housing element been approved by the Coastal Commission, and is there any danger that they may not okay this one, because in removing the lower-performing hotels, are we limiting access to the town for people of more moderate income?
Lucky for us, the Coastal Commission doesn't have any approval over the housing element. They just approve any implementation that changes the municipal code.
Okay, got it, good, thank you. Okay, couple other things, and this applies to all development, but I brought this up last month at a council meeting, if a developer gets, for example, 30 hotel keys and wants to do three affordable units for workers on the property, I think we need to find out a formula if they will be given the water, or does it need to be a higher percentage of affordable units, and that goes to all kinds of development, so that they are eligible to get the water credits. Another quick question is, have we thought about how we're going to set up the city housing fund? I also was wondering why the vacant space at the Carmel Plaza wasn't considered for the live-work units, it seems to be a perfect location downtown, and other cities have done developments with shopping malls, and the plaza has always been large and underutilized, so that, to me, seems like another area that we could potentially explore. Just some random quick points, I'm glad you took out the quotes from the document, they just didn't seem right. Under Slide 38, there's a listing of groups to help publicize, and also discuss the history or pride of the history of the village, and I just don't think Carmel Heritage Society has the resources to be able to publicize, I think maybe we need to put groups like Chamber of Commerce, Women's Club, Rotary Club on that list. I would like to see more photos in the document to illustrate the sites, I think visuals would help, especially, like, we get an address, but just to get a better sense of what places we're talking about. And then something that came up in Nancy's presentation about the ADUs, the pre-sale inspection program, just concerned with how that would work, and once again, concerns with property rights, I don't like the idea of sending city staff onto people's property without permission on that. So once again, thank you, everyone, just tremendous amount of work, and it's just very encouraging.
Thank you, Alessandra. Want to go around? Sure, why not?
Okay, I was kind of hoping to hear the council's comments, since Planning Commission just...
Would you rather do that?
Yeah, if you had mine, that'd be...
That's fine, I think that's great. Jeff, or Hans, or Dale?
I share, I share the concerns about ADUs, and I always have. That being said, we sort of had a gun pointed to our head, and we had to do what they said, but I think that Brandon understands that issue, and I think they've got some guidelines, right? Is that still cooking? All right, so hopefully that'll get done. And it would be wonderful if we could have people living in those ADUs, 77 of them, and anything that the group can do to encourage that, I would totally support.
Thank you, I have a bunch of comments, as you all probably imagine, I'll start again by thanking staff, thanking staff and Hans and the AHA group for all of the work, and I'll say again that my comments are meant to be taken in the context that housing is good, and I don't view this plan as just a plan to satisfy the state's requirements, I view this plan as a path forward for the actual maintenance of Carmel as a residential community, where residential means people, not houses. Alessandra spoke a minute ago about water, and I know, I know that staff had asked me to comment on that, comment on that as well, and I have, I think, as I think I said the other day, that the city's water allocation, as long as we have a limited water allocation, should be 100% spent towards the enabling of the programs in this plan. And I share, you know, Councilmember Dramov's concerns about how to best get that water towards the affordable sides of the plan, and not the market-rate sides of the plan, but I also, and I think that is a really valid, I'll say, I really think that is a really valid point, I also believe that some of these programs require the construction of market-rate units to facilitate the construction, and I'll talk about incentives in a minute, and I think we shouldn't forget that. So I would hate to not see, I would hate, for example, to not see 10 units built, you know, half of which are affordable and half of which are market-rate, because the city won't budge on the water requirements. I don't know how to thread that needle, but I hope that we would, I hope that we would find that way, find a way to do that, and I'll share everybody's concerns about ADUs. I do not think, you know, it's hard for me to imagine a situation where we supplied water to an ADU, you know, everybody talks about, everybody talks about deed-restricted ADUs, well, what I would say is that deed-restricted ADUs can also be empty, and I would hate to see someone, I would hate to see a house, you know, a property owner come up and get some water for a deed-restricted ADU, only to leave the deed-restricted ADU empty for the 30 years that the deed restriction was in effect. So until there's a way to sort of thread that needle as well, I would be really reluctant to send any of our water, or any incentives, in fact, towards the construction of ADUs. Hotel-to-residential conversions, I spoke about this a little bit, some comments that I didn't ask Tim about, in the analysis, I think on the slide that Tim did show, there were 85%, and staff will know what this is, there were 85 and 50% numbers, that 85% of the low and low, I think, Brandon, you know what I'm talking about, 85% of the, 85% of the low-performing units would be eligible for the program, and then 50% would actually use it, or something like that, and that resulted in, it's just a math equation that's in the, that resulted in the inclusion of, I forget what the number was, we went from 350 units to 175, 150...
161.
161 units in this program, and I think that's optimistic, and I say this again, like I did before, that I say that in the context of wanting this program to succeed, because I really do want this program to succeed, and I think it is a great program, but I'm concerned that the incentives are not enough, and staff, you know, we talked about this when I was making my comments, but I think this is a program that is sort of ripe for incentives, you know, from the Housing Trust Fund, and I'll talk about the religious properties in a minute, but I think that this program is ripe for some incentives, I think we'll have to do our work to make sure we don't overpromise these incentives to developers, but I think there's a way, I would like to, I would be interested in seeing this program jump-started. The downtown mixed-income and the other downtown projects are, programs are great, and I don't have any comments on those. The ADUs, I talked about, you know, I did make my comment about amnesty program, the amnesty programs before, you know, I think that's a real concern, I don't want to, I don't want to voluntarily go through, and I heard Nancy's comments about a state law, and the state law withstanding, I don't want to go through and legalize something that's not advantageous for the city. Like, this is not the situation that we had 20 years ago, and I would really hate to see that happen. I've talked about this before, and I think Mel may have brought it up, about doing an actual rental survey, or some sort of survey on the ADUs, you know, we have some history, as you've all demonstrated to us, we have a history of producing ADUs, and I think it would be really, really informative, and I think we should put some staff time into figuring out how many of the few dozen ADUs that we have produced that are actually rented, and/or, let me rephrase that, are occupied. So part of the, part of the reason for producing ADUs was so that people could age in place and have their caretakers, have their caretakers be in the ADUs, and I think that is a very valid and very worthwhile, very worthwhile part of that program, and I would, and so I would count those units as being occupied, and so maybe a better way of saying that would be, I would be interested in knowing how many of the ADUs simply sit empty, or are simply used by the owners of the house, you know, as additional forest space, like Karen Felito said. With regards to the churches, you know, I think that, I think I agree with Victoria and the AHA group, that the churches, I think this is a very good opportunity to get those few dozen units in, but I view the church program, and I think I said this when the housing element was adopted, I think that the church program is, really is a double-edged sword. I think that the state laws that provide churches with the opportunity to develop outside of local controls also provide them with the tools and exemptions that they can use to be, that might later be found at odds. to be, that might later be found at odds with, say, the comments that we're receiving, that we received about the parking lots. So it's difficult to imagine a world where a church comes in with a 15-unit apartment building on a parking lot that doesn't encounter the same kind of resistance that we've seen, that we've encountered with our ability to build, to build housing on parking lots. And, you know, as staff, as Brandon and staff point out, when we enter into an agreement to build housing on our parking lots, I believe, and I'll say this in a minute, that we could actually do something, to Alessandra's point, that is small in human scale. And it may not be, if we're going to take it out of the housing element, it may not be 30 units, but it could certainly be 15 units. When that church comes in and wants to build 15 units, they're going to, they have the ability to do what they want. Like Brandon's comments, you know, you know, staff's comments that, you know, we'll enter into a partnership with the church and all will be hunky dory, like, that's all well and good. But when push comes to shove, you know, people that live in sort of, I have actually been told by people that live south, people that live west down the hill from the Church of Christ Scientists, that they do not want housing built on that property. Like, I've actually been told that specific thing. And I was told that before I ran for office in 2018, no density on that church parking lot by an actual constituent. And I worry that we're trading by not developing the parking lots and by allowing the churches or incentivizing the churches to be developed, that we're creating, we're trading one problem that we have control over for another problem that we have a lot less control over. And my fear, my fear, you know, I think we need to build housing, and building housing on church parking lots would be probably okay with me. But my fear is that, you know, in the end game, when the churches encounter this resistance to their neighbors, and I think they will encounter this resistance to their neighbors, that they will drop the project. Because I don't think there's a church in town that really wants to be seen as an enemy of their neighbors. And my feeling is that these projects will sort of make it up to the finish line, and then they won't cross the finish line because of, they won't cross the finish line because the churches don't want to antagonize the neighbors. And frankly, they're, maybe they're okay now. And I don't know, you know, whether the churches are strapped for money, or how much they believe in their mission, or all this sort of, all of those sort of things. But that is a process that we do not control, and I really, really worry about what's going to happen at the end, what's going to happen at the end of the process to get a housing unit developed on a church parking lot. And as much as Brandon thinks that we could do that in a year, and I take that with a grain of salt in this context, I don't, it's hard for me to see that that's going to happen with the church parking lot. I don't know how to fix that. I don't know how to fix that. You know, I think it's a, you know, the program will produce housing, and I've said that producing housing is important to me. But I think that program comes with a lot of risks that the parking lots don't. I agree, you know, with Maria and Karen and a couple of others that have spoken, that the parking lots, the city parking lot should remain in the housing element. And I know that this is a losing battle, and I know that when the, when the document comes up for a vote in a month, or two months, or three months, or whatever, that I'm certain I will vote for it, but I will regret the loss of the parking lots. Like, I think that they are, if we're not going to build 60, or 70, or 80 units on the parking lots, we could build 30 or 40 units on the parking lots and do that much to produce housing in this community. Like, I think there's a way to do that. I think there's a way to build housing on those parking lots, and I think we should put forth a good faith effort, good faith effort to do that. And finally, we've talked a lot about, we've talked about water as incentive, and I know Victoria talked about water being, you know, Victoria talked about the churches, and Brandon just talked about fast tracking applicants, and we sort of, we sort of footsie around all this stuff. And, you know, there's another incentive that we haven't talked about, which someone talked about. Julia, Julie, Julia, Julia, Julia talked about, which is parking, maybe not in the way I would have talked about it, no, that's okay. Parking is a big problem here, and the state has sort of adopted the strategy that housing doesn't require parking. And if you read through, if you comb through all of the, if you comb through all the regulations about, if you comb through all the many laws that the state has passed, you know, a lot of them come with like no parking requirement. And just speaking of the churches, I suspect that the churching, you know, what's going to happen when the churches develop their parking lots is they're going to lose their parking lot, and now those people that live in the parking lot are going to park in the surrounding communities, and the people that come to church are going to park in the surrounding communities. And we'll hear from those people, just like we hear from the people around the Forest Theater about their parking. And we haven't really wrestled, you know, we haven't really wrestled with the parking, with the parking situation, and what is going to come with that. Another incentive is staff time. You know, Brandon talks about fast tracking projects. Well, there are lots of projects that are not going to be fast tracked. You know, there are lots of projects, like people that want to tear down their house and build another one, or people that want to renovate a bathroom, that are going to get stuck in the back of the line, and I think that's a real concern. And when we start prioritizing things like that with regards to staff time, we start unprioritizing other applicants. And we already hear complaints, you know, and this is sort of the normal course of business, we already hear complaints from applicants that it takes four months, or six months, or eight months, or 10 months to have a house approved. And it's, you know, it's going to be incumbent on us, on these two bodies sitting here, and on staff, to figure out how to manage the people whose six-month house has now turned into a 12-month house because staff is occupied doing one of these, hopefully, other projects. And I think that is also a real concern, you know, as we head into, as the council heads into budget season, and we talk about staff, as we're in budget season, as we talk about staffing, I think that that's one of those issues that we need to look at when it comes to how many resources we have in planning, whether it's enough, and what else we might do to make that process, make all these things sort of work together. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Hans?
So my comments are more of a, you know, more of a, kind of a general nature. I mean, I'm going to take us back, you know, last spring, when the previous iteration of the housing element kind of emerged for public consumption, I think kind of the number one comment that I heard from folks in town who'd studied it was that, you know, it didn't really feel like our plan. You know, it was pretty consultant driven, and it really felt like we were sort of yielding to this kind of one-size-fits-all mentality that, you know, many of us have found, you know, pretty frustrating about some of these state mandates, right? And so in response, you know, the community came together and a group of us, you know, formed this grassroots group, and we reunited by kind of this one overriding conviction that we needed to create a plan that was tailored to Carmel. And I think it's worth going back to some of the kind of subgoals of that effort to sort of overlay those against, you know, what has ultimately emerged from this process. You know, some of the parameters were, rather than using our scarce public lands, right, which, you know, are properties that we may need for any number of other potential, you know, civic uses. It's not to say that those uses are more important than housing, it's just that we have a certain number of, a limited number of sites that can accommodate those uses, whereas we have a lot of sites that could potentially accommodate housing. And so given that, let's find creative ways to incentivize the creation of housing on privately owned sites. And then rather than clustering the new housing in one or two large complexes, let's distribute it throughout the community. Rather than create 100% income restricted developments, let's pursue a mixed income approach that's best practice, and that more intentionally integrates folks into the city. And rather than building developments that span an entire city block, let's make sure the new housing fits with Carmel's traditional land use patterns with small developments built at a human scale. And then we got to work. And, you know, Brandon mentions the 10 months, that's the 10 months we've been working with the city staff. There was some time before that, I think, I don't know, are we going on 14 months? Something like that. You know, I was tallying it last night, and I think there's about like 40-ish residents in town that have been involved on this. Everybody from, you know, civic and business leaders to retirees and, you know, high school kids. And like Brandon mentioned, it's literally been thousands of volunteer hours. And as we promised, we literally left no stone unturned, right? We analyzed every property, we researched every creative idea, and we kept looking for ways to do this the Carmel way. And now, you know, owing to the work of all these folks, you know, I can sit here with confidence and say, you know, this is our plan, right? And these programs weren't created by a consultant, or even by the city staff. You know, we certainly benefited from their expertise. They were created by your friends and neighbors, right? By leaders of the Carmel Residents Association, local architects and business leaders, past and current council members. You know, I have personally written entire sections of this document, as have other members of AHA. Is it perfect? No. There are a lot of things that we had to include because they're just required by state law. But if you read this document, I think you'll come away with the impression that, you know, through this community-driven process, we created a plan that really is tailored to the unique needs and circumstances of Carmel by the Sea. And I wanted to close with one final comment. Shelby, I sent in a slide, I don't know if you're able to pull it up. If not, no worries.
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Hey, Brandon can help me. You know, the programs that are described here are going to prompt discussion. We've already had some of that discussion. Jeff raised a lot of really interesting points.
Yeah.
And I think that discussion is really healthy. You know, we live in this amazing place, and I think that, you know, our MO needs to be first, do no harm. But in my mind, the number one threat to the character of Carmel is something that's not on most folks' radar, and that's the long-term decline in the year-round population and the hollowing out of our community. And, you know, in 1980, Carmel had 4,800 residents.
I just need to tell IT. Oh, that's okay. Sorry. IT, would you guys mind flipping it over on the big screen to what's on the second screen of the laptop right now, please?
So, so again, in 1980, Carmel had 4,800 year-round residents. Today, we have 3,100. And as you can see on this slide, that decline has been accelerating. So we went from 3,900 residents in 2016 to about 3,100 residents in just the last eight years. And during that same timeframe, the median age went from 53 to 65. And so as somebody with a young family, you know, I can tell you that I feel that acutely. On my street, Mission Street, between San Lucia and downtown, there's about 150 residential parcels. Do you know how many of those have school-aged kids? Two, including me. So you look at these numbers, and I think the conclusion is inescapable, and Michael referenced this, you know, a week ago in our meeting, like, this is a dying community. And so, you know, when I went out and knocked on doors during the campaign, you know, I know how unpopular these housing mandates are, and I resent being told what to do just as much as the next guy. But I do think that this housing element process presents us with an opportunity to take some initial steps to reverse that decline. You know, over the past year, I've been talking to some of the old timers, and it's been, it's been fun to talk about, you know, old Carmel, which, you know, was a vibrant community full of families. You know, and one thing that's emerged from those conversations is that if you want to keep Carmel Carmel, you know, surely one of the most important imperatives is to make sure that we don't lose the people who call it home.
Thank you, Hans. I will give a few comments, not many. When we first saw on the Planning Commission, which I was part of at the time, we saw this document about 15 months ago, I think, I was very, very critical of it. I won't go into all the reasons why I was critical, but I will say that this version has really addressed almost all of them. The main things that concerned me at the time is, one was it, the previous document, it was sort of a hodgepodge of 50 different programs. There was no kind of common theme, no common language, no unifying language. It was just 50 different things. And a lot of them were even contradictory to each other. So it just felt like something that had been rushed. I think it was rushed, maybe it was rushed for the right reason, which was to take the builder's remedy off the table. That was successful, so good for that. But it, it had 50 different things, 25 of which were supposed to get done within the first 12 months. And just reading that alone, it just seemed an overwhelming promise that we were making to the state. And when it gets to the city sites, I am not against developing the city sites for something someday, but I was completely against agreeing with the state that we would have a developer under contract to develop the sites by January of 2026. That's what really concerned me. That is, that's moving fast, really, really fast with something really, really big. I don't think those are core competencies of this city historically. We don't move fast, and we don't have a great track record with big things. And I think we can get there, but my feeling was we really needed to start small and prove to ourselves that we can do things. And I believe that's exactly what this version has done. Turning constraints into opportunities, I love it, because that's what we have to do here, because we're out of a lot of other opportunities. We don't have a lot of land. We do have those two, the city sites, that's kind of it. We have church lots which have some space, that's it. Or we can go up. And that this doesn't accept any of those as constraints, but to the contrary says, you know, we have a lot of small lots, we have a lot of small, underutilized things, let's get after it, let's understand it. It's fabulous, because I think that's, that is accepting Carmel for the way it is today without trying to change it too big and too fast. I also say, this, this document, it reads like a book. Not a book I would pay for, but it, but it tells a story. It's well-written. So for all of you, I'm looking at, I know, because I know who you are, who took the time to wordsmith and write it, it's written, it's well-written. And it also, it's a Carmel story. You are making the plea to our state regulator that this is the way we want to do it. And, you know, when we talked early on about the Carmel way of doing it, and that we would actually do something that the state might actually be proud of, and I think that's happened, and that's shocked me, because, you know, we had a lot of discussions, I was, I was part of the AHA Group early on, and, you know, a lot of discussions about, do we actually go and ask permission by trying to recertify something? Or do we just not go and ask permission and ask forgiveness after we've done it? And I was all about forgiveness, just saying, no, let's go do something different from what we promised to do, and prove to them that we have made that work. Because I didn't trust our regulator, honestly. And I was absolutely wrong. The path of what you've done, AHA, to embrace Paul, and Paul, if you're listening, thank you, at HTC, and, you know, try to impress him, it appears to be working, and it should be, because this is, this is better than what they were asking for. And hopefully, there's a template here for a lot of small towns. What the other thing this thing has done, which is impressive to me, is it, it understands that for us to get public funding is going to be very difficult, even if we have big sites. We are just not going to sort to the top ever on those things. So we have to look for a way to do this without a lot of public money. And I'm saying without a lot, because there always can be some. And, you know, by taking, you've sort of taken some constraints in the city and created value. So the housing, the hotel program has basically embraced the fact that there's only 954 hotel keys allowed in this town. Scarcity creates value. Value can create incentives. And so you recognize that, you recognize that you've got, that a hotel key can be worth $2 million, and if it's currently sitting on an underperforming property, that's value. And if you can kind of take that density off of that underperforming property and then allow it to still pencil as an affordable project is actually, I think, brilliant. And I suspect the state thought that as well. To Jeff's point... To Jeff's point, water is another one of those things. And I think we talked about this last month, was we've got a brief window here where there's still not quite enough water. And, and if we can continue to create a scarcity, everybody's looking at you, I know. But to his point about, should we, at least for a couple of years, until there's more water, reserve the water allocation for affordable? Is, it's worth a conversation. Because again, that creates scarcity. And in that case, it actually creates abundance of water for housing projects, but only for housing projects. Right? And there's value in that. So, so many things that I appreciate. I'm fully supportive of all five strategies. I don't want to put the, the city sites into this document because I, I still maybe don't trust my regulator quite enough that if we put them in, we're going to have, it's a promise. This document's a promise. We've made these promises. This is the sixth cycle. It's the sixth time we've made a promise, and we haven't exactly delivered on the previous five. But I think the state is gearing up an enforcement mechanism that is going to start holding us accountable for the promises we make. I think this one should be achievable. Let's go. Let's, let's figure it out. If it doesn't, we'll still have city sites for, for the future. So, those, that's where I'm at. Do we want to go back to the Planning Commission?
Sure.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, mayor. I'll take over on this one. Before I talk about water, because I will talk about water, I just want to add a couple of comments. As I said, the Planning Commission met a week ago. We saw this presentation. And again, I do want to thank our AHA group. Great graphics today. And also that the presentation, you did a nice job of smoothing it up and making it so that I think today really was something to be proud of. My comments, obviously, I have mentioned in the past my concern about deed-restricted affordable housing. My experience as the water management person is that people don't like deed restrictions. And so, that just is such a challenge. The proposal for the live-work housing is fantastic. And I think that, that is something that we should work for. Not only will it assure that we have some workforce housing, but it also could potentially make these properties in the downtown more livable. The only question I have about it is, what happens if you have deed-restricted affordability and the worker has suddenly become very successful and no longer meets the affordability issue? So, just think about that one. Sand City has done several of these different live-work units, and they have some really good examples of how this can be put to use. The amnesty discussion, I think I mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting that the Water District has a very extensive database of houses, what water fixtures and whatnot are in the houses. We have been, for the last almost 40 years, inspecting properties when they transfer ownership. And so, we have the, you know, we actually have permission to go on-site. We do this as part of our normal processes. And it probably would be pretty easy to data mine our, our data to identify where there might be ADUs or caretaker units and also guest houses that have the potential to be converted to ADUs. So, I will offer that up to, to help out with that. Let's see. And water. Okay. So, water should not be held hostage for both, for just affordable housing. And I'm going to just kind of read what I said at the Planning Commission meeting and then just provide you with some more information. So, the, the document that we reviewed last week referred to water as a, quote, "great constraint." And water for new projects, right now, we have water in the city's account today. And I think you had a presentation from Marnie a month ago. It is subject to establishment of allocations for each land use, and that's something that will come to the Planning Commission and then to the council. The current constraint is on the installation of new water meters due to the cease-and-desist order against Cal-Am. Properties with existing water meters can move forward with residential projects during the moratorium by using inline or sub-meters. Multifamily housing of four or more units can permanently sub-meter. So, you don't have to have separate Cal-Am meters for each unit. You can actually have electronic inline meters for those units. And all other projects that are, are subject to the moratorium can sub-meter temporarily, as long as they can't be sold off as separate users. Most of the housing proposals should be able to begin plans as the district intends to petition the state to get the cease-and-desist order and moratorium on new meters lifted by the end of this year or the first part of next year. Most ADUs result in a very small, and when I say very small, like 5/100ths of an acre foot of water from your allocation, which you have 14 plus 2 and 1/2 acre feet right now in the city's allocation. So, they take very, very little, very, very little bit of that. And that's the result of onsite credits from demolition of an existing use. So, the city currently has 16 acre feet of water with 2 and 1/2 acre feet remaining from the last allocation that was in 1993. So, we've, still have some water available all these years later. Growth is not going to occur at a breakneck pace. And if additional water is needed, the Water District has clearly indicated that additional water will be available. I strongly urge the city to move forward with releasing water for projects that will take time to complete at this point, which is, you know, the Water District has requested that the pure water allocation be used only for projects that won't be completed until after the end of this year, when pure water expansion comes online. And that's expected in October and November of this year. So, there's no reason to hold back and call water a great constraint at this time. And I do want to say that the Water District offered to come and speak to the council last fall. We met with the representatives from each city in September. And then, we had dates at each of the councils and supervisors to talk about this water that is now available. Carmel's the only one that didn't get a presentation. So, I'm really going to encourage you to get that presentation so that you can ask any of the questions that you may have right now. And so, you can find out what's really going on. But I just really think that water should be available for both affordable housing and market-rate housing, as well as your commercial uses and remodels and additions. And it shouldn't be something that we have to feel that we don't have at this time. So, those, thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Concurrent with the, the pending adoption of the amendment to the housing element, I, I think that the city would benefit greatly if, if staff was able to come forth with the updated ADU ordinance, with that rental encouragement program, and with the pre-approved plans for the ADUs. At this time, we heard from Nancy that there are 45 in the pipeline. I'm not exactly sure what that means. But I know we've had one already come before the Planning Commission for which we could say nothing. And so, that ordinance and those pre-approved plans are going to assist staff. And ultimately, the city is going to benefit because the city, with those pre-approved plans, is going to communicate design guidelines and restrictions that we are otherwise unable to do.
Thanks, Mel. Chair LaPage.
The pickup comments. I want to express the appreciation I have for the, the work that the AHA committee did. When the first housing element came before us at the Planning Commission, it was back in April, I guess that was. We were really under the gun, and we had to come up with something really fast. And we had, the state, you know, specified how many affordable units and how many market-rate units. And so, we didn't have a lot of time. But now, we've, we've really put the work in. The community's put the work in. And this is a very diversified selection of different types of housing opportunities. And the real challenge is going to be getting down in the weeds. And everybody here has had a lot of comments tonight about things that they agree or disagree with or direction they want to see in each specific category of housing, you know, opportunities that's been presented. So, that, the real work's going to happen after this is certified. And I'm confident, because of the way that the staff has approached this, they've had intermittent meetings with the HCD, and they've gotten good, positive feedback. So, I'm very confident that we can get this, this amendment to our housing certification approved. And then, when that happens, the real work's going to start. Because if there's anything I've learned for doing almost 20 years now of permit review for the city, for free, is that housing is really controversial. And it always will be. And, but, but it's the key to the demographics and the identity and the culture of our community. And, you know, Hans really kind of laid out the numbers about what's happening. We've got this shrinking. But really, what's driving it, and maybe you don't want to hear this, is the cost of housing. And that's what the whole affordability issue is about. And that's where the whole challenge in this is. So, we've really got to figure out a way to make all of these, these numbers and these programs really work. And so, to kind of end on a positive note, I'm just going to give some ideas that I sort of pulled up looking at this online. And we've got to, first of all, we've got to be really transparent in our communications, you know, which I know we always strive for that, but that's something we've got to always keep in mind. We've got to have a community involvement. And obviously, we do. The community came up with all of these ideas and worked really hard on it. We've got to continue to do that. We've got to address all the common concerns. You know, we've, you know, we had a real political reaction to the city sites. And there's been a lot of reasons given. But we're going to have to identify, you know, what is, what is the common concern of the community? If we, if we really want to develop affordable housing, then we're going to have to look at all the options. And I think the public-owned land is part of the option. So, that's, that's just one common concern. And the incentives, we've always got to keep in mind the incentives. You know, we talked about the ADUs, you know. What are the incentives there? What are the incentives for the work-lives-space downtown? You know? All of these have different effects. But we've got to look at all the stakeholders' positions and hear from them in the conversation so we can really work out incentives that, that really do incentivize people. And we also have knowledge, what are the de-incentives? You know? So, we've got to keep that in the conversation. And the other thing we've got to do is we've got to do a lot of myth-busting and education. There's a lot of misinformation out there every day, and it's only getting worse. And it's just getting amplified by, you know, all the things that we, we know that amplify it. So, so we've got to really work on that with the public. And then, we've got to figure out political and legal strategies that are going to help us, you know, get this done. You know, and there's a lot of legal strategies that have to do with the Senate bills that are being passed, which we have to bring our, you know, our, our land-use documents into conformance with. And then, we're going to have to work on the politics of it and figure out, you know, what's best for the community. I know, I know, I was going to say Commissioner Dels. But Councilman Dels, I know is very concerned about regulation from, at the state level. I know the whole community is. And I, I agree, I'm concerned with that, too. So, we're going to have to figure out how to make that politically work for this little, small town that we have that is really special. And we all know that, you know? And that's why we're all so concerned about, you know, maintaining the character, the quality of life that we have here and we enjoy. And we understand that this place is unique. And it really wouldn't take much for it to just be changed radically. And, you know, and housing, housing can do that. So, we have to always think about, how are we going to maintain the character of this community? And one of the things I really think that is just really beautiful about what they've done, you've done here, is you've created this affordable, obviously, it's focused on affordable housing, but it is spread through the community. And that, that's a real key issue. Where we don't, you know, we don't have it just warehoused in one place. You know, it's, it's spread through the community. So, that gives the opportunity for people to, to meet, you know, people that come from different economic paths, that have different perspectives. And that's what really creates, you know, that's what enrich, enriches a community, is that, that diversity that develops along, along a whole bunch of different things, you know? So, that, I think that's what I really find really commendable and positive about this. And so, I, I'm looking forward to working on this with all of you and working out a lot of these details. I have a lot of ideas with this. You know, I've, I've, I've done a lot of design work for a long time. And lately, all I'm doing is ADUs. I've got permits from seaside down to greenfield for ADUs. It's really a very dynamic market. Whether you agree with ADUs, there's things you love about them, you hate. It's happening. Because that, I think that is the one thing the state handed down that is really affecting the housing market. So, so I'm looking forward to working on all this with you. And I want to thank you for all your comments and this opportunity to have a chance to speak with you jointly, because we don't usually get that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Good. Thanks, everybody. I think we're done. So, and, meeting stands adjourned. And we need to clear out pretty quick so that, because we've got a, something else coming up.
You got to follow me?
We have a closed session.
Oh, you're not going home.
We could take a seven-minute break, yes.